Good to see you again.
Richard turned him in.
I'm sure he did.
What'd you turn him in to?
They're kind of going over the sidewalk.
Yeah, I may want to borrow this shit.
They're across the street. There's a hole in my car front door.
The one on my chair.
Not the point. Get your car. The leaves are real soft.
So I see that Marty is really good.
You seen that?
He wears shirts.
I did too. I read it in the paper.
Well, that's always good to be kept aside.
Do you have a subscription to the paper?
Why?
I was surprised. He told me he was going to, but I was just surprised.
Oh, hi.
Nearby saddling us.
Why do they hand them up?
I do that and I'll have them hanging right here or they're up here.
People can always choose. And they're made, they don't want to predetermine which is.
I meant that in between, I need the cheaters and the migrants.
It leads to an expectation that it's not meant.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. White, can you sit down please?
Oh, were you?
Six o'clock.
Oh, you're running the meeting tonight?
Yes. Sorry. All right, I'll call the May 29th City Council meeting to order. Please check your cellphones, make sure they're on vibrator silent. And Madam Clerk, would you call Roll, please?
Mr. Royball?
President.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
President.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
President.
Mr. Laborn?
President.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Dr. Rennie?
President.
One member is absent. We do have a call, Mr. President.
Hey, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Expression of appreciation to the 2017 to 2018 Mayor's Youth Council and State of the Youth Address.
Jan Spires, Office of Youth Alternatives and Staff Advisor to the Mayor's Youth Council. President Rennie, members of the governing body, parents and members of the public. We are here tonight on a special occasion to recognize and celebrate the 2017-2018 class of the Mayor's Youth Council. We also will commemorate their service to the community and what they have learned by serving on the Youth Council this year. We will start with a State of the Youth Address. It will be given by Julia Horst, this year's Chair. Julia is a junior at Central High, and she will share some of the group's projects and what they have learned during their time this year on the Youth Council. Julia?
President Rennie and members of Mayor's Youth Council, of City Council. I am Julia Horst, and I am here.
That's how it is.
I am here to represent the Mayor's Youth Council tonight. I have been on the Mayor's Youth Council for three years, and I think this year may have been my favorite. We've accomplished many wonderful things this year, including numerous volunteer projects to benefit our community. In December, we put on our annual cookie decorating extravaganza in conjunction with the Special Friends Program at Youth Alternatives. We invited children from Cheyenne to join us at the Children's Village for a couple hours of holiday fun. Recently, we also got involved with the VA here in Cheyenne. We decided to focus our project around the VA because we felt the veterans in Cheyenne often go unnoticed, and we've recognized the profound impact a group of interested teenagers could have on veterans who don't often get much time with youth. After taking a tour of the VA, we sat down with some of the veterans and talked about research we had done on the USS Lexington, as well as listened to their stories and shared some stories of our own. We also volunteered to clean up the courtyard at the VA by clearing out weeds and dead plants in the garden areas so that new plants could grow and the veterans could come and enjoy the nice weather. Through our involvement at the VA, I think as a group, we learned a lot about the lives of veterans and the value of face-to-face conversations with them. In addition to the various projects we did, we also had many opportunities to learn about the city of Cheyenne. We learned about the basics of city government, sorry, community recreation, the West Edge and Pump House Park projects, Board of Public Utilities, and downtown development, along with much more. Members of this year's Mayor's Youth Council also attended events such as the Mayor's Resiliency in Youth Lunch and Learn Series, Youth Alternatives Volunteer Recognition, and the Mayor's Bloomberg Challenge. I would like to extend a thank you to all of the wonderful people who took time to teach us about Cheyenne, and a special thank you to Mayor Orr, who was always excited to share her experiences as well as the latest and greatest details in Cheyenne. I think I speak for all members of the Youth Council when I say her enthusiasm was inspiring and much appreciated. Finally, I would also like to thank Jan Spires and all of my fellow Youth Council members. Not only have we gained a better knowledge of our community and greater leadership skills, we have also gained many friendships that we would not have otherwise made. While it is unfortunate that this year has come to an end, many of us will have a chance to be part of Mayor's Youth Council next year, and a chance to build on the leadership, community knowledge, and friendships that this year, as well as past years, have brought. To those of us that are returning, I cannot wait to see what adventures we'll go on next year, and to those who are moving on, I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for all that you have done to make this year such a special one. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Mr. Fountain will ask you to join us at the far end there as we prepare to honor these teens for their service. We first and foremost always want to thank their parents and family for sharing them with us and for the privilege of working with your youth. It's been an exceptional year. These guys, they just blended together so nicely at the very beginning of the year, right from the get-go, and it's, sometimes that takes a little while. This group was pretty outstanding in that respect. All of these young people strive for excellence, and we'll try to just share a little bit with you about that as we honor them. And we strive to teach them about city government, but more importantly, we also want them to learn about leadership, being involved in your community, that civic trusteeship is an important thing, and how you go about doing that. And really, that is by building relationships. That's a lot of what they learn. We very much appreciate all of the city staff who have taken of their time as well to share with us this year, members of the council, the mayor. And with that, I would like to introduce our graduating class of the 2017-2018 Mayor's Youth Council. We will start with McCoy Bush. McCoy is a student at East High, and he has earned his varsity letter in basketball this year. He has also earned his Eagle Scout and received a Youth Leadership Service Award from his church. Ashen Doty. Ashen is a freshman at South also, and he's active in a number of activities, including marching band, football, wrestling, and soccer. Ashen will return in the fall for a second term on the Youth Council. Emily Lucero. Emily attends South, excuse me, Central. I don't know why I said that, Emily, I'm sorry. She is active in DECA and attended her first Nationals this year as a freshman. She earned her letter in golf and also participates in 4H. Emily will be returning in the fall to the Youth Council. Haley Sanchez. Haley attends East High and is a member of the Interact Club, marching, and mariachi bands. She has volunteered at the Botanic Gardens for the past two years. Dominic Singleton. He's a freshman in the IB program at East, and he stays busy with jazz and concert choirs and is a member of the marching band. He was also named to the Wyoming All-State Choir this past year. Dominic will also return next year with us on the Youth Council. Next, we will move to our sophomores. Our first sophomore is Alexis Arb, and Alexis attends Central High School. She has lettered in choir this year, and she also participates in the Pink Gloves Boxing for Teens program. Lexi will join us next year on the Youth Council. Kieran Logan. He attends East High School, and he's active in ROTC, and he was named a Flight Sergeant in that program. He was also selected to participate in the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar. He served this year as our first vice chair and will return next year for his junior year. Next, we have Nick Matheny, and Nick attends Central High School, and he is active also in ROTC. He received the Association of the Army Medal in addition to holding the position of A Company Commander and Color Guard Performance Commander. Now, moving on to our juniors. Maggie Black. Maggie attends Central and is in her third year on the Youth Council. She is active in DECA and holds a state office with the program and attended DECA Nationals. She won the tennis state doubles championship last fall, and she will serve as Chair of Central's National Honor Society in the coming year. She served as our second vice chair and will return for her senior year. Dylan Fertig. Dylan attends East High and is on his second year with our council, and he is active in five bands, including mariachi, jazz, pep, marching, and concert, and he has been the trumpet section leader for two years. He runs cross-country and indoor track, and Dylan will be glad to have you back next year. Julia Horst. Julia, as you know, is a junior at Central and has served three years on the council. She's involved in a number of activities at Central where she participates in orchestra and was named to All-State Orchestra this year. She will also serve as Secretary Treasurer of the National Honor Society there, and she participates in cross-country and art. And Kunitra Shanks. Kunitra is a student at East High, and this is her second year on the Mayor's Youth Council. She is a member of the junior volleyball team at East and has lettered in varsity dance. All of these young people have, this year, I would say, demonstrated exemplary leadership. Their attendance has been wonderful. They're all excited to come in each time, and as we always say, a lot of times, we learn more from them, maybe than they do from us. But I would just like to invite you to join us at this time to recognize and acknowledge the accomplishments of the 2017-2018 16th graduating class of the Mayor's Youth Council.
I want to thank all the members of the Youth Council for all the time and effort that they've put into being part of this, and I also want to recognize and thank their parents for supporting them while doing it, because I know early on, you probably had to take, you know, drive them to meetings and the like, at least till they got their driver's licenses. So, thank you all. We're going to have an interesting meeting tonight, but maybe a long one, so if those of you involved with the Youth Council would like to leave, now would be a good time to do it.
Nice try, Robert.
You didn't try and slip out with them, huh?
Consent agenda, all agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. We will move on to the next item.
May we have a motion, please?
That's right. We do need a motion for that.
So moved.
All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Johnson is a no.
Next item is number eight, vouchers.
Mr. President, I do have a conflict of interest on that.
Mr. Royball has recused himself. Any discussion from the public on vouchers? Any discussion from council on vouchers? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance Third Reading amending the city of Cheyenne solid waste fee schedule.
Vicky Nemecchek, Public Works. I just wanted to bring up that there has been some discussion about the yard waste program and the fact that we're raising the rate significantly, basically 16%, in order to fund a new route next year, and I would tell you that I have no objection to not doing that. I was, if the council does not feel that that's appropriate, I have no objection to adding the 5%, which would make the $7.90 fee go to $8.30 and continue to operate as we are with a list of people who want to be added. I do feel that it's necessary that we act as though this were a business and not start spending money where it is not justified, and I feel that that's where we are with the yard waste program at this time. With 375 people on the list, that does not justify another route, but if we increase the fee, then I would add an additional route. But again, I'm not, I have no objection to not doing that. So that is the only other thing that I wanted to add. I will be available for questions.
Are there any questions for Director Nemechek?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner.
Through you. Director Nemechek, what was the year of the HDR study, again?
2014.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Any other questions? I have a question. You said 375 names on the waiting list was not enough to establish another, an additional route. What would be the ideal number, then?
We need 3,000, but I would say that once we got halfway there, that would be a reasonable time to add another route.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Case?
You know, I don't know, do we, in this, through you, do we, do we keep, do we add to the waiting list, or people just quit calling in because they have been told no? In other words...
Vicky Nemecchek, through you, President Rennie. We have a continuing waiting list, so as people are drop off, when they call, we put them on the list, and they stay on the list until they receive a container.
Okay, then, through you, do you suspect that a lot of people have not called in? Because the rumor on the street is, we just don't have enough, have a root. I don't.
Vicky Nemecchek, through you, President Rennie. No, I think that we have, I think 375, but 350, I believe. 350 was the last number. I think that's a good number for the number of people that really want a yard waste container.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nemecchek. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Royball.
Just to build on Mr. Case's, is it something that if we build it, they will come? If we have the route available, do you think we'll pull in more customers?
Through you, President Rennie, it's possible, but I believe that we get a lot of calls about, we get a lot of calls about yard waste, but I don't believe that it would be a significant number. I think if we got to 500, that would probably be as far as we're going to get, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, and, Mr. President, one more.
Mr. Roll.
Is there a portion of town that's significantly underserved by this, or is this all over, equal all over the city?
President Rennie, through you, no, it's equal throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Go ahead. Mr. Johnson?
I guess, can you give us the definition of a route? So if I say I go and I pitch this, and I get you even 1,000 people, then I don't want those 1,000 people to say, "Well, you're now on the list, but the route we created doesn't service you," so can you explain how a route creation is done?
Through you, President Rennie, a route would be established based on, if we added a route, we would separate a portion of either the three remaining routes or something to make it the most efficient that we could. It would create a route that one driver would drive five days a week, eight hours a day to complete that route. That is, in fact, a route. One vehicle, five days a week, eight hours a day.
No more. Mr. Cook?
Yes, President Rennie, through you, to Vicky, real quick. I guess my question is, wow, I'm close to that thing. My question is, and you may not have, you may not be able to tell me, and that's certainly fine. Of the 350, 375, the number that we have currently on the list, do you know if, have we gotten a lot of those calls recently, or, I mean, I guess I'm just like everybody else's questions, I'm just trying to, you know, rationalize if we're getting a lot, and if it looks like it's building toward that, you know, 500, 750, where we maybe need to consider it. I'm just wondering if, if we're getting a lot of calls right now, it might, maybe it behooves us to think about it, so I'm just wondering if you keep that kind of, that data or...
Through you, President Rennie. Mr. Cook, we would, we have been continuing with this list for approximately a year and a half, and we have been able to serve some people, but not as many as we'd like. Probably 20 a year is all we're really getting. So I would say that the majority of those people have been on the waiting list a year or more.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mr. President, just one.
Mr. Roll.
How many people are, actually, maybe more than one, but how many people are on a
Through you, President Rennie, a route depends on the, on what they're picking up, but on a yard waste route, about, right now, about 3,500.
So 3,500 every week, or every two weeks, is what you pick up?
We pick up 10,500 containers per month.
Okay.
Per week, per week.
Okay, so if we added a fourth route, would it make it more efficient for the other three routes?
President Rennie, through you, we, I feel that we're fairly efficient the way we are, but it would obviously enable us to provide more service to more customers, more, and it is an optional service at this point, so not everyone has the containers. It's certainly more efficient to do trash because everybody has a container. It's certainly more efficient to do recycle because everyone has a container. But we are able to service a lot more, let's say, a trash route is about 750 people per day. So that is, it's a big difference because most people don't put out their yard waste containers every week, and that's how we're able to service 3,000 customers.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
President Rennie.
Mr. Leonard.
Could, is there any way that we could split up the, we got three routes, we got 350 people on the list, couldn't we split, spread that 350 people around somehow, or...
Through you, President Rennie, I would love to do that, but we are at our maximum capacity. We don't have time to pick up any more containers. There's simply not enough time or enough volume available in the trucks to get, to pick up, get back to the compost facility dump, get back, go back out on the route. We are at our eight-hour limit right now. If we, if we add more and try to split them up, we're looking at overtime, which is a possibility. We could look at that option, but we're already past our abilities at this point. We've added as much as we can. Over the past couple of years, we've added about 600 people to the, to the, to the routes, to the service.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Through you, President Rennie. So I guess, I guess that's sort of my thought, and I think Councilman Royball's thought too. Would it behoove us, then, Director, if we, if we added a fourth route, obviously putting the 350 people that are waiting, you know, obviously, they would get priority on that route, but then would it, would it allow you then to maybe take just, just a number, you know, 500 off of each one of those other three existing routes to maybe sort of ease up some of the pressure on those other ones, and then still allow for, for new people to come onto that route?
Through you, President Rennie, that, that is exactly what we would do. The, the fact is, is that we would then be in a cost loss, we would be losing money to providing the service, because we now have an additional person, an additional truck, additional costs, additional fuel, additional maintenance, all of that, we provide the service at basically at cost plus our, at cost plus, the landfill, the compost facility, the e-waste facility, all of those things. So we would, in fact, be providing a service where we were losing money.
So, just to follow up, through you, President Rennie, so really, we need, we need routes to be at the 3,500 capacity, cost-wise, to be efficient cost-wise. It doesn't behoove us to try to split things up, but rather, if we had, if we had the numbers to justify another full route, that, in your opinion, would be the best, would be the most prudent way to do it?
President Rennie, through you, yes, I believe it is, I think it's only fair to charge a customer what it costs us to provide the service. But as we go into next year and our integrated solid waste management plan, we also are looking at being more efficient with our routes by possibly moving to a four-day, 10-hour work week. That may enable us to expand our yard waste program as well, and not at the point of losing money while we're doing it. So when you have less lunch hours, less breaks, less, more time on the road, we can be more efficient. So that may be an option as we work towards that, being more efficient.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at this point.
President Rennie, council members, my name's Jeff Dirksen, Pinto Lane, and one of my concerns about the solid waste fee schedule was the yard waste. And I understand it's not a difficult, or it is a difficult problem to solve. I understand Ms. Nemecchek's dilemma. I still think it's unfair that 10,500 customers essentially subsidize a new route, especially when that is, it sounds like it creates excess capacity for the foreseeable future of roughly 3,000 to 3,200 containers, once again, being subsidized by the existing 10,500 customers. I don't really have a solution. Ms. Nemecchek, you know, mentioned one with a four, four-day, 10-hour work week. There might be other alternatives to somehow split the routes up. It just, once again, seems to me to be a little unfair to the existing people to have them pay for excess capacity that may not get used for some time to come, if we only have 350 people on the waiting list now, and a typical route is, constitutes 3,500 containers. My one, one question is, is, is this, is this fee structure reviewed annually, such that if we all of a sudden had an increase in the waiting list, could we do something this time next year to review the yard waste schedule and adjust it accordingly, and then maybe add the capacity at that point, if it was, if it seemed appropriate?
The fee schedule is reviewed annually, and I think they probably monitor that throughout the year also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, the motion to approve on third and final reading failed, therefore there is no recommendation from the Finance Committee on this item.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move...
Move to approve? Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Leiborn. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner.
I will move to amend by adding a note 16 that reads, "No revenues realized from the 5% sanitation fee increase may be used on payroll until such time as the construction and equipment objectives identified in the 2014 HDR study have been completed in full."
Second.
It's been a motion by Mr. Shaner, seconded by Mr. Roybal. Public input on the, on the amendment, or on the motion. Okay, discussion by council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Leiborn.
I have a question for the Public Works Director.
Go ahead, Mr. Leiborn.
Now, I assume you'd be the person to make that evaluation as to whether or not those conditions had been satisfied, is that right?
I would, through you, President Rennie, I would assume so, yes.
Can you give me a ballpark or a guesstimate as to how far, how close we are today?
Ms. Nemec.
To what?
To, to actually fulfilling those conditions of that study. I believe he referenced equipment and, construction?
Vicky Nemec through you, Dr. Rennie. Fulfilling the requirements of the study were basically that we get to a point where we would be a self-sustaining fund and have the capital money available to both close and monitor our landfill in the future. We did a basic 40-year review into the future using a 5% increase for the next, the next three years, including this year, and then 3%, which is basically the CPI, we thought was a reasonable number to use as a CPI for each year following, and we come out even, basically. So if this is not passed, however, we come up short.
Well, that's a, kind of a difficult choice for us to be making here. I'm not clear how close we are, or you're telling me that we're not going to meet that self-sustaining if we don't do the increase, and yet, I believe the sponsor of the amendment seems to have an opinion that we are in that vicinity, and if we're going to evaluate that process, I was just curious how that would happen.
President Rennie through you. The, this, the amendment, I'll, I will say that the 3% performance pay raises that are currently in the budget are less than 1% of the entire solid waste budget. They are .75 of 1% of that budget. So it is a very small number out of the, out of the entire $16.5 million budget for fiscal year 19, but it's certainly something we can ensure if the budget passes with the performance raises and this passes, we would move forward, still looking to increase the rates as necessary in order to meet our requirements for operations, capital, the capital projects, and everything that we do throughout the year as an enterprise fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, any other discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
For Ms. Nemec. So we've raised it 24% over the last three years. From my understanding, the transfer station's done, we've completed that project, we found additional monies over the last three years, we've got a vertical expansion that we got a variance for, we could kind of put off the horizontal expansion for a couple of years, that was the explanation of why this was done. So with the, one of the main key projects of why we were sold this the last three years, seeing that you have the, still the 24% increase over the last three years, and now we're lowering it with our variance that we didn't account for back in 2015, I'm wondering, you know, with this amendment, how much really do you guys need, knowing that our one project's done, so that 24% is still out there that we've approved? So how much more is it that you guys actually need to, I mean, for your equipment, your landfill variance, to, for the horizontal, for the capping, for the monitors, I mean, exactly, in order to make the account whole, how much, how much is it that you guys actually need?
Through you, President Rennie, the, the review that we did over the 40-year period shows that we need, just for the landfill, we need $50 million. That, and then we look at each budget individually each year to, we have our equipment replacement program, we have our leases that need to be paid off, we have operations, we have payroll, we have supply costs, all of those things. What we did was estimate that $50 million and how we, how a landfill is built, that's our, that's our primary amount of money that we need to save. And so that $50 million has to pay for, first, the $10 million, first, the first two cells are built with about, with approximately $10 million. And then as you go, you fill that cell and you collect money to, to build the next two cells. And then when you fill that cell, those cells, you collect money to build the next two cells. And so your major money is upfront, but you have to collect as you go in order to build out your landfill to the 50, the 49 years that it's estimated to, to be there. The, then you have to, once you built it out, you have to close it, and then once you close it, you have to monitor it. So all of those numbers we put together and estimated what that will cost in 52 years, which is when we're looking at closing that landfill, and that's what our 40-year review did. I don't have that 40-year review here, but it's a significant amount of money over the years, and to not collect that money means we shouldn't build our landfill. Even though we have a permit, we need to either be invested in this landfill or not build it and start hauling back to alt. Those are our two options at this point.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, and I, from what I've gathered from the sponsor of the amendment, that's exactly what he would like to have done. He really would like to see the focus on the landfill completion for, you know, say if it's 52 years, so that we actually can plan accordingly over that span and worry, you know, less about 3% increases, you know, on payroll. And I think that's where, at least from what I've gathered from him, that's the direction he's kind of heading with this amendment.
President Rennie through you. My comment there would be that if we don't take care of our employees, we won't have anybody working at the landfill to manage our waste, or at sanitation to collect our waste, or at the compost facility to collect yard waste, or at our electronics waste facility, or household hazards waste facility. It is difficult to not give people any increases in pay and expect them to stay and do the work that is the most difficult work in the city. There isn't another job that's more difficult. I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying that we're not, we are focused on the landfill. We've been focused on the landfill since 1995. We've really been focused on the landfill in the past few years, and I think we've done an excellent job, sorry, I'm just patting myself on the back, at getting a permit. A permit was not a done deal, it was, we had to work at that, we worked really hard. Now we've got it, and I think it's important that we show that we're invested in that. But we can't forget our employees either, that's just, we pay our employees at the sanitation department $14 an hour to start, we give them $15, 50 after they've been there a year and they can get a CDL, and then they get promoted only when there's a position to move into. So it's difficult to keep employees, and we do have quite the turnover there. Not so much in some other areas, but, but at sanitation, yes, we have a high turnover. We are focused on the landfill.
Mr. Johnson. Ms. Nemec's up, does anyone else have any questions for her? Mr. Case?
Mr. President, through you. I could be wrong, and I don't want to put any words in my colleague's mouth, but I, I get the sense that individuals on the council haven't been sold on the idea that there's a solid plan in place over X amount of decades to get to that $50 million mark. I, I could be wrong, it's just kind of the sense I get, and that's where some of this hesitation is coming from. Thank you.
President Rennie through you. We do have a plan. Our plan is a binder about this thick that you all have a copy of in your office, and every year we update it, and we work hard every year to make sure that that plan is updated and that we move forward in a way that is appropriate for both our citizens and our enterprise fund.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the amendment to add note 16? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Mr. Leiborn, were you the no? Correct, all right, Mr. Leiborn, all right. The amendment is approved. Now on to the main motion as amended, any discussion there? Any discussion? Hearing none. This is third reading, will be a roll call vote.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Roybal?
Yes.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Leiborn?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
No.
Hey, the ordinance is approved, 72.
Ordinance, second reading, approving and establishing revised water and sewer rates, tap and system development fees, administrative fees, service charges and penalties, and septic and commercial waste dump rates as recommended by the Board of Public Utilities.
Yes, Randy Hayes, Administration Manager for the Board of Public Utilities. Very briefly, and I do have a handout, as you're aware, the Board of Public Utility is recommending a 3% increase, and that would include all rates, including system development fees, septic hauling fees, and administration expenses. 3% raise will approximately raise revenue in the upcoming fiscal year for the water fund of approximately $220,000, and a 3% raise in the sewer fund would result in about $184,000 in additional revenue for fiscal year 19. Bringing that down to the customer level, the bill for average household, which is about 4,000 gallons per month in the wintertime, would increase the water portion of the bill by 65 cents, and the overall charge would be $23.10. For $4,000 a month in sewage usage, the increase is about 70 cents per month, resulting in an average monthly charge of $24.58. Multifamily plex has a slightly different rate, but as an example, a multifamily, say a fourplex, using about 8,000 gallons a month would result in a, a monthly amount of $40.26. That's compared to residents using the same amount of $42.28. Basically, there's a $2.02 difference there, and I do have an example there for you. The board does look at different cost indices when we're trying to figure out our annual increase. Basically, we look at three. Two of them are, I guess, more germane to the water sewer industry. That'd be the Bureau of Labor All-Urbain Consumer Price Index, and for 2017, that was 3.53%. The other one that we looked at that also is more related to our, our line of, of work, which would include construction costs, pipes, that sort of thing, is the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, and for 2017, that was 4.6%. Additionally, we look at the Southeast Cost Index for 2017, Southeast Wyoming, I'm sorry, that was 2.2%. Finally, we look back at our master plan, which was accomplished in 2013, and that at that time recommended for this fiscal year, 4.5% increase for the water and a 7% increase for the sewer. Just by way of information, our fiscal year 2019 budget has decreased its operation and maintenance expenses by $1.177,000 this fiscal year as compared to last year, and we also decreased our capital expenditures by $1,445. That was due to a number of projects and a number of studies that we did last year, as well as some reduction in other areas of the O&amp;M expenses. By doing so, with those reductions and the 3% increase, it allows to meet our annual goal of rehabbing three miles of water main per year and two miles of sewer main. I think it's important to note that even doing that, the estimated life of a sewer water main is between 60 and 80 years. We have 398 miles of water distribution mains, and at three miles a year, it'd take us 132 years for a full replacement cycle. We also have 337 miles of sewer main, and two miles per year would be about 168-year replacement cycle. So as you can see, we have a ways to go. And with that, I try and answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Shannon? Through you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes, for that explanation, and just for the public, perhaps the governing body, can you explain why you are asking for a fee increase, but at the same time substantially reducing your expenditures from last year?
Sure, through you, Mr. President. Comparing the budget this year to last year, there's a number of things that did happen last year. By way of our operation and maintenance expenses, we actually had three major studies that we had in this current fiscal year, one being a $400,000 seal removal project from the North Crow Reservoir, and also a $400,000 study to enlargement of dams, Crystal Dam, Grant Lake, and Rob Roy. On the capital expenditure side, we had a number of big projects that are no longer in this current year's budget, I'm sorry, in this current year's budget that we're completing. One is a hydroelectric generator out at Sherard, and that's about a $2.8 million project. The southern sewer water main, all the piping out by LCCC, it's about a $13 million project. And the southern sewer main project, and that's St. Ari's, about 12. And the southern sewer main project, and that's St. Ari's, about twelve. So a significant difference between this current year's budget and last year accounts for most of the decrease. I would say the consequences of not doing a three percent increase might be twofold. One, what we would do, most likely, is decrease maybe one or two rehab projects on the water and one or two rehab projects on the sewer. Would hate to do that because you can see what a replacement cycle is now. I think the second factor behind the three percent increase is, I guess I'd call it a major concern about our infrastructure as it relates to the North Range Business Park and the Warren Air Force Base plans out there. Could very well happen that we are faced with a significant amount of money to bring that infrastructure to a place where we can accommodate the future growth that's out there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Any public comment?
Jeff Dirksen, Pinto Lane. I've got a couple of questions. The first one addressing replacing water mains. It's come to my knowledge, or at least I've heard, that sometime in the past, there has been lead pipe that has been used in Cheyenne Water Distribution, and we may or may not know where all that lead pipe is. So my question on that, discussing or talking about replacing water mains, do we know where we have lead pipe? Do we not know in...
What's your second question, Mr. Dirksen?
Second que, well, my second question is more, more of a comment, and it has to do with, and there was a gentleman named Ad that talked at the Finance Committee, and he brought up a question about the rate tiers for water for multiple, multiple-family residences, and that there's a different tier structure for those versus single-family residences. And to me, I tend to agree with him. That doesn't seem to be, sound fair to me because the multiple-family residences are, are assessed or charged on a lower, lower rate of usage for the same amount or the same rate. And while it was explained how the tier structure is, is applied to multiple-family residences, it doesn't seem to me to justify why there's a difference between a living unit in a multiple-family residence versus a single-family residence and why they're, they're charged based on different rate structures. So there was an explanation how it's applied, but I don't believe there's been a justification on why the rate tiers for multiple-family residences for each individual dwelling unit is different than it is for single-family residents, and I'd like to know if there's a justification for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, if you're prepared, do you care to address either of those questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll try. The second one first. Our base rates are predicated on our master plan study that was done in 2013. And the overall goal and objective of the master plan, as far as rate increases, is to try and have equality between the different classes, not only multifamily, but residential, commercial, and industrial. One of the reasons why there is a difference is even in the fourplex, sixplex, or any other combination of units, there's only one meter. So you take the one meter and apply the rate structure, which the base rate for multifamily is three thousand per unit. It's going to come out every time that the multifamily is less. That's principally because there's only one meter in that location, and you would divide that base cost of the meter by four, four, fourplex, or whatever number of units there are. To the first question, yes. As we do our rehab and replacements, we have a fairly good idea of where the lead is in the distribution system. That said, there's many, many houses in Cheyenne built back in the forties, thirties that does have lead connections on their property. But I can say, as far as the distribution system is concerned, we have a pretty darn good idea where all the lead lines may be and are in the process of replacing them as we're aware of.
I, that brings up a question for me. While we're in the process of rehab, rehabbing our mains, and if we come across a residence that has a lead connection, are they told of that connection?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other public comment? Any further public comment? Hearing none. May I have a motion? Mr. Dirksen, you're just under the wire.
Just one additional comment about the, the fairness of the rate tiers for multiple-family versus single-family. It seems to me regardless of whether a family, same-sized family, lives in a multiple-family unit apartment or a single-family residence detached, they're going to save, use the same amount of water for cooking, washing, laundry, flushing toilets. So why do we not apply the same tiers across the board for family dwellings so that there's some, some equity across those? Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? May I have a motion? Astrid, were you? Sorry.
Is there?
Come ahead, yes. I didn't see you getting up.
Astrid, owner of the Plains Hotel, sixteen-hundred Central Avenue. I've had to do studies this year to determine a fair allocation between apartments and a commercial property on this, in the same property, and I came across maybe an answer to whether or not smaller dwelling units or fourplexes versus a single-family home might, might be charged a different amount. And that was that there were several studies that said the usage of water was very much contingent on the size of the home. So if you were in a four-thousand-square-foot home, you had a lot more laundry, you had generally more people, you had a lot more yard versus a smaller home, two-thousand-square-feet, versus an apartment, five-hundred-square-feet, all the way down to mobile homes, which might be three to five-hundred-square-feet. And it showed that there was a substantial decrease in the amount of water used by people in smaller housing. So I don't know if that helps determine anything to do with the tiered or multifamily thing. The other, I just wanted to make a statement as far as lead pipe and lead soldering of other pipe. I think that when you go back farther in time, say a hundred years or more, that we might have a higher percentage of lead in these pipes, and my request is that we look at, are some of the oldest parts of town, a hundred thirty years old or whatever, in more need of expediting lead change-out as opposed to maybe the forties to seventies where we're talking about the connection? So I would just ask if that could be held in the thoughts of prioritization. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Going once, going twice. All right, now may I have a motion?
Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading.
I so move.
Second. Second by Mr. Case. Discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance on second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. Ordinance is approved on second.
Ordinance, second reading, appropriating monies for the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming for the various purposes and conducting the municipal government of said city, and fixing the amount of general and special taxes as part of the revenue required to meet the said appropriation, all for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
No comments? All right, public comment, please.
President Rini, Councilman, good evening. My name is Stephanie Lowe. I am president of the Cheyenne Public Employees Association, and I would like to speak on supporting the three percent performance pay that is in each department's budget before you tonight. I spoke to you last week at the committee of the whole, and just want to continue expressing our support for this performance pay. As you are aware, approving the performance pay for the employees shows your support for their hard work and dedication that keeps the city running. We come to work every day, and as Ms. Nemec has highlighted, some of us are not paid as well as others, and yet we continue to come. The pay that some of these employees receive is very hard to fill positions, and yet people still take these jobs, and it would be much appreciative if we could increase some of these positions. Even if they don't get the full three percent raise, some sort of increase shows support for what they do and shows that you are behind them when they come to you and ask for new equipment or support for clothing improvements, improvements, excuse me. The three percent raise also is something that the Employees Association has been asking for, for a number of years, to coordinate, to coordinate with the employee evaluation increases and improvements. So I feel that these go hand in hand and are severely needed for the five-hundred-and-seventy-two employees across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Good evening, President Rini, City Council. My name is, many years now, amazingly, time flies. Before I get into why I'm here, I first want to thank my colleague, Aaron Wilmarth, who is our elected official of the PPA, the Police Protective Association. He comes and represents our agency, our officers, and does a fantastic job bagging us and is our voice. And so I'm here tonight to, so that you have a different voice, one with a little slight distinct accent, so hopefully you can understand what I'm saying. This year, you've been presented with a budget, and in that budget, there's been needs that the police department has, your officers need. Just about every year, for as long as I've been here for ten years, I look at the city employees throughout this city, and I'm not from here, so I've come to this city with an open eye. I come from a small town where we, as the voters, would vote on a budget every year. We would vote on whether or not a fire department gets an ambulance or a fire truck, or the police department gets a police car. That's how it would go. We didn't have a city form of government. It was a small town. Here, I come before a city council who represents the city, the, the people that, that elect you to, to this stand. And so with that, I look at the city as I've been here for ten years, and I look at several people who I've come to know and that work in different agencies in the city, and I see a lot of differences. I see good employees, hard-working employees. I see employees that give it their all, and yet year after year, somehow I think their services are taken for granted. I came here with seven years' law enforcement experience, so I wasn't a rookie by any means. But in four years, the pay scale that we have, I maxed out. I couldn't go any higher unless the city voted on whatever they voted on for a raise. I've heard tonight people speak on supporting employees' raises. We're not talking about a large raise here. We're talking, if any, a cost of living adjustment. I think in my ten years that I've been here, I can count on one hand what we've actually been given, opposed to how many times it's been proposed or asked for. But yet there are some employees in the city that come year after year asking for raises and most years getting those raises. And so I start to see this, and through the years, your city employees that get most of what they ask for are up here, but yet the, the morale and the feeling of, are we worth anything to the city down here? We can pay so much from a police perspective to hire and train. It's thousands of dollars. Do we just throw that out the window only to get somebody else to come in and start over, or do we put value into the, the talents that we have? We have a lot of talent at that police department, and I'm, I'm very proud to work with the officers I do. I've stayed here. I think we have a, a chief that has come before you and has supported us. That's pretty good because he, he sees what we need. Our administration supports us that we do and officers, and if there are issues, they're very open to hearing those issues from us. So I come to you as an employee, as a taxpayer, as a resident of this city, and I ask that you really think hard, the needs versus the wants that are being presented before you this year. There are wants in, in the supplemental budgets and things being proposed to you, and there are needs for what this city has. We can keep growing, and we can keep looking at the city growing and say, yes, we're getting revenue. This is great. But if you don't have that infrastructure and public safety to support it, it has a negative effect on too. Our officers go home tired. Regardless of what specialty they work, or if it's the streets or wherever, we are busy. We are a growing city. And I think as I've asked around and talked to people in the city, they support, they support the, the, the needs that the police department has. They support this three percent raise because they see what city employees are doing, and if you want to keep good help, you have to keep up with it and have a plan to keep moving forward. We can't keep playing catch-up. We have to develop a plan that is going to keep us competitive or else we're going to lose good people. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Shaner?
A question for Officer Fardella. Mr. President, through you, Officer Fardella, thank you for your testimony. You just had mentioned something that kind of struck my curiosity. You'd said that there are needs and wants, and there are just a lot of wants in the supplemental budget, and I wondered if you were aware that all the police raises and new positions are actually contained in the supplemental budget, not the standard?
Well, again, needs versus wants. What do we need? I think we need to look at what is the track history of what have we had from a police side of it? And that's the homework you guys have that's all been presented before you, and I think you can very clearly decipher what is in there about what will help from the city employee side of it to what are some other things that maybe this isn't a good time to go through. The raises, I think, are, and I think taking care of your employees are. I'm not going to break down what I feel in my opinion. When you look at everything together, that's not my place to do that. I'm not going to do that here. But I, I stand here supporting that the police department has not had raises, and rarely, again, we're not looking at gigantic raises. We just heard Board of Public Utilities, three percent increase. Trash has gone up over the last couple of years. Things have continued to go up, but that little two, three percent, we, we haven't had. And so that's why I'm standing supporting my colleagues for this.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Hearing none. Mr. Case?
Mr. President, the recommendation of the committee of the whole is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second. Royball or White, I think there's.
Mr. You can give it to him.
Mr. Case?
Mr. President, I move to amend by removing one-hundred-thousand dollars from reserves and placing it into the abandoned building line item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Public discussion on the amendment. Public discussion on the amendment. Public input on the amendment? Hearing none. Discussion from council. Mr. Johnson.
The way I feel about the blight, after reading so many covenants throughout this city, I know it's a lot more difficult for the citizens to actually get a class action suit, to actually fight blight in their existing neighborhood. And so therefore, it comes out of actual taxpayer dollars to go take care of issues that I believe the neighborhoods could take care of, but I think it's just easier to come to us. As we have on the agenda tonight, there's a $43,000 abatement for just asbestos for eight, the 800 block of capital for just two structures. So $100,000, if we are going to equate to that, really doesn't do much more than two additional lots. And so I'm more of the opinion that the residents should take care of their own neighborhood, start talking amongst themselves and find some attorneys that can actually enforce their covenants because from what I've understood, the covenants are enforced by the neighborhood itself, similar to an HOA, and I would rather see them take that upon themselves. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Schenner.
I support putting some money into this line item. However, I don't think it's appropriate to take it from reserves because I see it as a recurring expenditure. We've done it for several years and I think we'll continue to do it. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote this motion down and then we can incorporate it into recurring revenues with an amendment follow.
Further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Leiborn.
Well, when I go to the neighborhood and people come out and talk to me, they believe that we have a responsibility to enforce our codes and that that public health and safety side of their neighborhood and their existence is extremely important. So I understand the argument of continuing expense, but clearly this is not like personnel expenditure that's continuing. This is something that we need to do. I speak very strongly in favor of the $100,000. The example that we have here of the house that is being torn down tells us what the cost is. And I just don't think anyone in this room would be satisfied living next to some of the properties that I see that are wide open. They've got wild animals in them. They've got transients coming by. They've got issues with fires and substance abuse. It's a serious problem. Of course, it's a continuing problem, but $100,000 is really about, I would say, the reasonable minimum that we should be expending here.
Mr. President.
Downey.
Just a comment, if I may. The mayor would like to see $100,000 in the standard budget and also within the budget this year, there is, I believe it's $53,000 in the CDBG for blight. And there's also a possibility of an additional $30,000 in the CDBG recapture funds that can be used for blight. So I just wanted to add that in.
Thank you, Mr. Treasure. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Case.
I would agree with my colleague to the left, Mr. Schenner, that voting this down might be appropriate and then reinsert this into a line item so that it is part of the recurring budget. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Through you to Mr. Downey. With the community development block grants, with those blight monies, is that commercial or residential?
Through you, Mr. Downey. Mr. Rennie, to Mr. Johnson. I believe it's for residential, but they're basically shovel-ready projects for blight. So, but I believe they're scheduled to be for residential.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
Yes. President Rennie, I don't so much have, gosh dang it, I need to stand like back here. Be nice to me. I don't so much have an issue, in fact, I do agree wholeheartedly with the $100,000 for this ongoing effort. But I also think, you know, sort of a somewhat lost part of this conversation is, you know, historically and maybe President Rennie and even maybe Mr. Leiborn and Mr. Roybal, gentlemen who have served longer or have served at different times in the history of the city. I guess the way I look at this is, you know, we're in the position now where we do need to start spending some money on nuisance abatement because we've gotten to the point where we have to start taking these, you know, taking this into our own hands. But I also feel historically that we have not maybe given code enforcement and nuisance control the assets and the resources they've needed in order to maybe, you know, stem some of these things and been able to work to, you know, correct some of these issues and work with the landowners so then we do get to where we have such a large inventory of homes to where we are going to have to have this continuing expenditure. So I would, I think it would behoove us at some point, whether it's this budget or next year at some point, but I think it would behoove us to not only locate funding for this specific need of abating the blight, but also to give our code enforcement officers the ability to, you know, stem some of these issues before we get to this point. I think it's sort of a double-edged issue and I think, you know, it could very well reduce the continued needed expenditure to do this kind of abatement moving forward.
Further discussion? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. My colleague, Mr. Cook, certainly hit it on the head. Our code enforcement staff is very understaffed. When you look at comparables, the code enforcement division of the city of Casper has four officers and we have one. That's a big problem. And I think if they were given some help, perhaps we could at least start making some progress on what certainly has become a problem in really each of our wards, not just one particular ward. I like Mr. Schenner's idea of perhaps giving some recurring funding to this project because unless we deal with it, it's only going to continue to get worse. As it is now, I really don't know how we make progress with what we have, but I'm willing, I understand it's a drop in the bucket. But I'm willing to support anything, whether it's $100,000, whether it's extra with, including the CDBG funding, whatever we're able to get, we should really, we should really support because it's a problem that just gets worse by the day. And unless we address it now and unless we try to address it aggressively, it's only going to get worse for all of the neighborhoods in our wards.
Further discussion? No? All right. So the amendment is to take $100,000 from reserves for the abatement, blight abatement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I see the noes. Johnson, Case, Schenner, Luna. Cook. Cook and Roy Ball. The amendment fails.
Mr. President.
Mr. Case.
I move to amend by removing $21,000 from reserves and placing it into the animal shelter line item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Cook this time. Roy Ball got the last one.
It's the ball. I thought we were paid on seconds.
All right. Public discussion on taking $21,000 from reserves and adding it to the animal shelters budget. Discussion? Hearing none. Discussion from council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Schenner.
I suggest we do the same thing with this as it's a recurring, every-year expenditure that we amend the budget after this to include the $21,000 in the actual standard budget as opposed to using reserves.
Mr. Johnson.
Did he need, was that an amendment?
No, just.
Okay. I was waiting for something else. Okay. Is Chief Fect in the crowd? Yes, he is. Just, okay, so my inquiry is, is so from 8:00 to 11:00 was three hours daily for five days a week. So that was 15 hours a week that the animal shelter used to be open, it was now closed for 52 weeks. So with $21,000, how much does that actually break down to, to one hour? Because it looked like it was roughly, when I tried to calculate this, it didn't look like it was much more than around six to 10 bucks. So I was wondering if exactly what it broke down to when we closed down for that many hours for $21,000, what that broke down to as far as an hourly rate that we were closed.
Mr. President, Bob Fect, Cheyenne Animal Shelter. I'm not quite sure that I understand the question, Mr. Johnson. I apologize.
Okay, so I'm going to have to consult with the mathematician here. Okay, so it's closed for three hours a day from 8:00 AM to 11:00 for five days a week. So that's 15 hours a week.
52 weeks and 780 hours.
Okay. And so what does that equate to for the $21,000 when it's broke apart with 750?
About $27.
$27 an hour, just under 27.
Okay. So it was $27 an hour and so how many staff members were actually there for those three hours that, was there just one staff member that they, they got $27 as far as, I mean, for $27 an hour to keep the shelter open one hour, that's what I'm trying to justify, that as far as, you know, somebody actually going in, you know, whether it was a volunteer, a paid staff member, you know, just to keep the doors open, does the shelter actually operate that simply on $27 an hour?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Johnson. When the $21,000 was removed from our budget, I tried several different methods of trying to cut our costs to offset that amount of money. Some of them worked, some of them did not work. Our front desk staff makes on average somewhere in the $10 an hour range. So cutting those three hours, seven days a week, did save some of that $21,000, but not all of the $21,000. There were other things that I also cut in order to offset that loss. Does that make sense, sir?
Yes. And so my follow-up is.
I have a question, just a point of clarification. Mr. Johnson, you said five days a week. Chief, you just said seven days a week. So how many days are we talking about actually?
Mr. President, to you, we are open 362 days a year. We close for Christmas, Thanksgiving and New Years and we just voted to close for Cheyenne Day this year. So we were basically open 361 days a year. Every one of those days, the hours changed from opening at 8:00 in the morning to opening at 11:00.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Well, now that actually changes the equation because I thought it was just the weekdays and the weekends were already a later shift. So what does that equate to if we?
Tell you in a moment. Okay, so 361 days times three is 1,083 hours. So it would be a significant difference.
How much is it?
$19.40.
Okay, so I guess with $19.40 now, if the $21,000 is added back into the budget this year, whether through reserves or as they try to acclimate it in on a regularly scheduled basis, what is the plan then? Are they planning on extending or opening the hours again for 8:00 AM or is that too drastic of a change? Or with the changes you had to make in fiscal year 2018, what kind of modifications would be made on the animal shelter if the money was given back?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Johnson. If it were a condition of the council to go back to 8:00 AM, then I would do so. However, I would also ask that you consider that we will be hiring as of June 18th, a second full-time veterinarian in order to handle the load that we have coming into the shelter. That position is going to be without benefits, with benefits, probably about a $75,000 increase to our budget. So I am willing to open at 8:00 AM if I need to, but I have other budgetary needs that I also would like to address.
You good, Mr. Johnson? All right. While we have Director Fect up here, any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Discussion on the amendment. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of taking $21,000 from reserves and adding it to the animal shelter budget signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Fails either. Okay. Mr. Case, are you finished?
I am finished, Mr. President.
All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Schenner.
Couple of quick questions for the fire chief.
Greg Hoggatt, Fire Chief. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, through you, chief, this, your budget has quite a staggering amount of increases in it and a majority of that is contained in this new concept we're being asked to address called a supplemental budget, which is one-time money. However, the majority of these expenses appear to me to be recurring type expenditures. Overtime, specialty pay adjustments and then training and then a lot of equipment. And so my first question is, if you're given an initial boost by this council out of reserves to get caught up on some of this deferred equipment maintenance, what's your, what's your plan to start like a replacement fund or something to get, start getting caught up on this so that we aren't getting, tapping reserves to help you get the equipment you need?
Well, sir, that comes in a lot of different forms as discussed at the Committee of the Whole the other night, is one of the plans that I have in fact is, is to take a look at all of our equipment that has a life cycle, assign a life cycle to it. Some equipment needs to be replaced all at once. Air packs, every air pack needs to be the same across the city. They all have to be replaced in one. That has an average of a 10-year life cycle. We can calculate that out. Most budgets that I've ever worked with never allow you to save money from one year to the next year to put towards the future. I have had seen in places where that has been established that you can create that type of contingency fund to plan. So as I lay out everything in the department and assign a life cycle value to it, I'm better able to project in years, big purchases, as well as establish saving some funding till we get to that, majority of that is paid for. It's kind of the same concept that a lot of municipalities employ in a fleet replacement fund. Pay a little bit extra out of our budgets every year, put it away to a fund so when a vehicle breaks down or it's at its end of life cycle, we're not struggling to find where the money comes from. We're not having to do special assessments. We're not having that thing. We're not having to do special assessments, we're not having that thing. So, there's a lot of things that, as I've come to find out in this department, we need that unfortunately have not been stepped out over periods of time to be replaced. There are things in this budget that more quantities need to be purchased. However, I felt after review with staff and what we looked at, some of those could be purchased, one this year, one next year, and so forth. The problem has become that, as I got here, there is so much need that we're hurting in so many major areas, I can't buy littles and littles and littles to get us out of the hole. It's, the hole will just keep getting deeper and deeper. I guess, you know, as I explained, we can put a Band-Aid on this, or we can do surgery and put sutures in it and close this wound and keep it from. Otherwise, it's just going to keep bleeding. And unfortunately, this has become a major issue in areas of equipment that has reached its end of life, that a lot of this equipment is liability aspect for us, the department, for our firefighters to do their jobs. Some of it is getting to the point that inhibits us from doing our job. And there would be nothing worse for me than to lose a life, lose property, or to get a phone call from you that I have to explain that the reason I couldn't put a structure fire out is because my hose ruptured, is my water supply, because it's been so old and hasn't been replaced. We did a very, very large assessment. I challenged every officer, every person that have a different portion of the department that takes care of equipment, small equipment, hoses, radios, all the different things to come to me and justify to me what we needed. And between myself and my staff, we sat down and we either approved it, modified it, or said, "Not now." And the point that I'm trying to get to is, is what we gave you is an honest assessment. Now, I will say that there probably is the things that I have put in this that, that I know that are needed, but ultimately, I understand that, you know, I'm not going to get it all. And I've, I've tried to do a lot of different aspects of this things. I've looked at a dollar of different ways to present this, as the memo I sent to you all is pared it down from the initial presentation of almost $2.89 million down to a manageable, what I feel a little bit manageable by doing some different options. You know, and I gave you two options, either purchase the top 10 items, which are critical need infrastructures, or spread that out over a few years and we can get a lot more in here to stop that going. So, I guess in the long way to answer it is, is I'm trying to identify things that I can forecast in the future to keep from coming to you each time and saying, "I need, I need, I need." There's a lot more things in the department, stations, apparatus, and things that, between fifth penny, other options and things that we're working on, we're trying to resolve. We're looking for any way and anyhow we can deferred cost, find somebody else to pay for it, grants, and so forth like that.
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner.
Through you. So, do you need us to establish a equipment replacement line item for you, or can you do that on your own?
Well, I believe that would have to be...most municipalities I've ever worked with, with the end of the budget year, if you don't have any money, you give it back to the city. So, yes, I believe there would have to be some direction that says for futuring. I came from an entity that we, we had a certain amount of every year that was given for specialty purchases in large scale, and what we did is we scaled off of that allotment every year to put away. But again, that's outside of the normal budget-to-budget cycle, and those are the specialty areas that I'd have to yield to the treasurer to find out how we could do those things or if it needs to be enacted by you all.
Okay. Mr. President, through you. And then, my next question is related to the overtime proposal. We're going from 381,474 in the adopted 2018 budget to 789,000 in the 2019 proposed budget. So, almost doubling the amount of overtime, and that stood out to me because, you know, at least during, you know, discussions about the new leadership team and your, your presence in the fire department, that we were really going to get overtime under control. So, can you explain to me why we're, why it looks like we're going up instead of down?
Well, sir, you know, when we came in here and the way it was allotted in the, the contract and then into the budget, the first thing is, is we've, as the answer goes through the treasurer today, we've accounted for the new costs, the new pay, which goes up, and the specialties, and so forth. There are other classes, other training scenarios that we're putting through. Again, some of those being in specialty areas, special operations, hazmat, and rope rescue, technical rescue, that we're trying to get reimbursement back from Homeland Security. In some cases, we're sending extra people to be trained as well that are outside those teams. The other additional thing that happened is, you know, last year, we put five people through, just to start it, as I got here, we were hoping to stem the tide of where that's going. Well, since those five people have been on, I've lost one who's in, the replacement is finishing up the training now. I have had another gentleman resign and leave. I've had another one resign and go to the state, and I'm forecasting at least one, if not two, more to go. So, then also to the fact, I still have somebody on military deployment, and then I've had a few injuries and long-term sicknesses. So, while I can do everything I can to cut down on abuse, to make sure that it's not going to the same person to beef up salaries for final cash-out for pensions and fair inequity, I do have a certain amount of minimum staffing that I must have every day or the unit's out of service, and we have to keep that. The secondary layer on that is, is continuing, talking with my union leaders in department discussions and operations, as lay down the gauntlet, that there's a lot of things that we need to look at in moving forward and open discussions that, as we move forward, will be brought back in open discussions in the next contract and looking at those ways. But yes, there have been some things that, that I have stood out, and I have said, this is, cannot go on, and we have to slow process through union contract, rules and regulations, civil service rules. So, it takes a while to get all those things moving dynamically. But the request is showing there is a reflection for the rate increase and a reflection towards an estimate of what we're looking truly to have. Again, I will do my best to re, to keep everything in line. It was interesting that I looked at my budget report as I stand for this year's current budget, and I'm still just under with about 30 days to go, just under what's been allotted overtime for the year. So, I'm doing my best. It's just that there are, there are forecasts for training, there's forecasts for other things that come with the classes and what we need to do and to cover that. So, it's an increase to try to get that thing that's been lacking for quite some time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any other questions for the chief while he's up here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
He segued this beautifully. Okay. So, in regards to paramedic overtime, this actually has come from several of my constituents wondering why the truck has to go out for paramedics every single call when AMR replies to, so it looks like overkill. And so, as far as our overtime, if a lot of it was on the paramedic side of it, as far as staffing issues, is there any, looking at the future to maybe not send the truck out for every single car wreck that's out there, that AMR should be able to take care of this?
Well, sir, the first thing is, is we're required by the state of Wyoming to have at least one paramedic on the ALS unit. We have five in service every day. Only when we run out of five do we hire specifically a paramedic. As then, the response is to what goes. We have two medical directors that oversee protocols that both paramedics for AMR and ourselves work for, and how we treat people and under the doctor's care and guidance. The next layer is, is what we call the emergency medical dispatch, and they review the type of call. So, when somebody's on the phone and calls the 911 center, it makes statements to the communications dispatcher. They run it through a series of questions, established emergency medical dispatch, and based upon the answers they get are what units are sent. In addition, one of the things that I've started to look at is all of our call responses and what we are sending on every call to ensure that it's not an overkill. I have questioned already several times, why do we send two pieces of an apparatus to an auto accident, especially on low-speed roadways? The first one is pretty much required. If we have a spill, we have oil leak, fluid leaks, and if somebody's injured, to properly announce a people to take them out of the vehicle to secure them. But a second one on a low-speed highway is sometimes not needed. So, we are reviewing those aspects in the long goals to reduce those things. One of the things in the future, after we get the sutures in place and the wounds healing, is to take a look at the aspects of rescue trucks, smaller two-person vehicles that could be sent out on different low-acuity calls. I would hesitate on never sending the fire department versus AMR because, while we're in what's called a static deployment, we're in five centrally-located fire stations, they're in a dynamic deployment, so they're constantly moving, and that fine Irish guy, Murphy, will always dictate that the seriousness of the call is, means the ambulance is the farthest away, so we're in between and need to go. So, then, it's a dynamics of understanding our service to our citizens and what we're supplying. But by bringing on in the future a couple of rescue trucks, we can stop sending the larger trucks, we can go with the smaller trucks, we can build in additional redundancies to add support to the fire ground operations and other things we do, as well as being additional layer that when there are no AMR units available for transport, we'd be able to do so. It was a long-term project and goal to constantly evaluate what we're sending and why we're sending and how we're sending them.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up, since we've been talking about surgery, I guess, what, what's the happy medium between the suture to cure your ails but not bleed the treasury?
That I will call and say that I'm a paramedic and I'm going to let you all be the doctors.
All right. Any other questions for the chief while he's up here?
Mr. President, just one as a follow-up to Mr. Johnson's. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that everybody on an AMR ambulance is a full-blown paramedic, and that is, plays into the requirement to you all having to show up to this.
Yes, sir. In most states, the ambulances are required to have usually at least one emergency medical technician and one paramedic, so it's a one-in-one combination. And we're in the, basically, we supply at least a minimum of one paramedic on an ALS unit, and at least the other two would be EMTs. And in some cases, some are not even certified at that because we have never established in this department, the minimum would be EMT. So, the dynamics and another thing being is, when we get to the call, if you've ever been in an emergency room and the more critical the patient, the number of people helping that patient is equated with the same thing in the field. We go on an emergency first response, a high critical, critical priority dispatch for somebody who's having a actual heart attack. There's a lot of things that two paramedics have to do in support with the EMTs that are helping them out. Again, we do lower-level acuity calls that we go to, that we cancel the ambulance a lot of times, the slip and falls, just helping Mrs. Smith as we recall her in the fire service, off the floor and putting her back in the bed with no needed services. We keep that ambulance available for those critical transports to the hospital because that's the one key piece that we cannot do, is take somebody from the scene to the hospital. Can't do it. Even though the truck's got a hose bed, we can't put somebody in that bed.
Further questions?
Mr. President. Chief, looking at your options on the lease purchase option on both the scuba gear and the radios, do we, you said that both of those have a 10-year life cycle?
Dr. Rooney, through, through you to Councilman Royal. The SCBA, it's self-constrained breathing, it would snow you, underwater is out. It's, it's the same basic principle, compressed air. That has, by NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Association, at about a 10-year life cycle. Two NFPA standard revisions or 10 years is the guidance that we use when applying for the AFG grant, assistance to firefighter grants from FEMA. We'll well past that. These packs cannot go through any more updates or upgrades, so they are definitely done. The radios, the radios, I would say, the life cycle is depending on the entity and how they're being used. A lot busier departments, say Denver, they may only get five years out of their radios. I think we can get 10 out of ours. The problem being is, is our radios are at the end of life cycle that Motorola will not support these radios anymore. So, we're going to have to replace them. If we break a portable or a mobile goes down, we have to buy the new one or go to eBay to get the parts if we can get them.
Well, it, Mr. President, it's, it's not like we've never done this before because of, with the Packers, we were doing that for a while, weren't we? The lease owned, so we did five years and then we owned the Packer at the end. My question is, if we do this, it'll save, well, just doing quick and dirty math, about a million off your budget. Seven years? Okay. But, so if we save a million off your budget this year, you can, and you continue to put the $138,000 and then the $144,000 for the five years, at the end of that five years, do you continue to do that so the next time you need the upgrade, you have the cash-ins hand?
That is, as was pointed out, a contingency fund by, you know, Mr. Shaner, that yes, I mean, if that's the establishment, I'm sure that not just my department, but every department can identify and look to the future to say if a garbage truck is needed. That's, that is the key thing that I've seen a lot of entities do, is a fleet replacement fund. Your vehicles are always paid for when you need them, except for the wild card that if one's destroyed at three years and so forth like that. But yes, if we can identify a lot of big-name items and plan for that, SCBA is a 10-year life cycle. As I said in the presentation and before, the, one of the, the great things that you all did was grant and buy two sets of personal protective gear for every firefighter, and I applaud you for that. The only thing is, is I didn't ever bought two at the same time because now that means two sets have to be replaced at the same time. Need to stagger in there. So, the front line is worn for about five years, and then it goes to reserve cycle. You then reevaluate at that five-year mark and you knew this technology and things, then you replace it, and you're always constantly moving it to reserve. It's kind of like a fire truck. We buy it with an average life cycle, front line, maybe around 10 years, and we push it to reserve for another two to five years if we can get it out of that. And so, you're constantly looking and staggering those amounts. So, it's, some items, again, have to be bought all at once. Save the money for it, some can be put in the budget and bought a little at a time every year. It's just unfortunately, we have so much now.
Yeah.
That we need to buy.
Well, again, I mentioned the other night about the depot. Do we have an O&amp;M fund for it? And all I got was a lot of head shakes. We don't. So, it's something I think we need at least to look forward and start setting funds up like this so that we have the money when we need it. So...
Any additional questions for the chief? Any further discussion on the budget?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner.
Just some, some preparatory remarks to clarify some of the big questions that this council is, is facing and explain to the public. In my tenure, this is my sixth budget on council, this is by far the heaviest lift I've ever had to see a council do. We're being asked to address a $9 million proposed increase in one year. That's an 18% increase. And so, that's, that's quite a bit larger than what we've had to deal with in the past. And that increase is split up into two different categories. There's about a $2.5 million increase on what we call our standard budget, which is normally how we budget with recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. And then, there's about $6.5 million of what's being called a supplemental budget, which is being funded through about $5.5 million out of our reserves, and then 1.2 million anticipating the sale of some land that we have not decided even to sell yet. So, what's, what's particularly interesting is that out of that 6.5 million in one-time money, reserves in this projected sale of land, are millions of dollars in recurring expenses. So, adding new employees... So, adding new employees, raises, overtime, equipment, training, et cetera. And so, generally, just from a common sense perspective, but also from a government budgeting perspective, we've always resisted the proposals in the past to use one-time money on recurring expenditures. And so, the impetus for the amendments I intend to make this evening are to remedy this situation and place recurring expenses into recurring revenues and then address some of the shortfalls that we've, that we have, the backlog of certain things that have been deferred for a long time that we need to start getting caught up on, but at the same time to keep some money in our reserves for several large construction projects with unknown budgets and possible overruns in the future. So, Mr. President, I'm going to hand out just some draft language here to everyone before I make the amendment. You can hand those down. So, Mr. President, one of the big questions we're faced with is we have over a million dollars proposed in raises, and those break down into two categories. There is a EIS raise for approximately 28 employees, which the Employees Association addressed in terms of addressing those inequities and giving some employees that are under-market value up to what's been identified in the study as market value. And then, there's this placeholder for roughly $770,000 for what are called merit raises for a potential merit program yet to be installed. And then, the sum of the EIS raises, as I understand it, are included in the standard budget as well as the supplemental budget, so it's kind of blended. And then, the performance merit-based raise placeholder are all in the standard budget. So, Mr. President, my first amendment is that I move to amend the proposed budget ordinance as follows. Removal of the approximately $771,818 proposed to be expended on merit raises in the standard budget. And item two is remove the entire $6,534,851 proposed in supplemental requests.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Case. Discussion from the public?
President Rooney, members of the council, I am Aaron Wilmar, the president of the Cheyenne Police Protective Association. I did not plan on speaking tonight. I believe Officer Fardella very thoughtfully explained how the officers of the Cheyenne Police Department are feeling. And I hope that I'm not stepping ahead of myself for what Councilman Shaner has planned for the rest of his amendments. I just want to remind this council that the city employees, they are not a line item. The city employees are the employees serving your community. You have had director after director up here requesting a raise in their budget by fee increases, and yet, every single city employee, other than the fire department who has binding armadillo, is looking at this council and seeing that they don't matter, that the city council for the city that they serve does not value the employees. I would highly suggest that every single one of you, please think about the employee who serves your community. Please think about the raise in cost of living that they have. I explained a lot of that the other night, so I'm not going to go back into it. But that is my thought on this, that you please think about that these employees are also citizens of your city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Stephanie Lowe, president of the Cheyenne Public Employees Association. I echo much of what Detective Wilmar said. We understand, I understand that you're in a very difficult situation looking in such a large budget increase. What we are asking for, for the employees, is such a small percentage and, from what I understand, has been budgeted very carefully so that it is not coming from reserves. Instead of doing a one-time bonus at the end of the year, we are looking to try and better budget throughout the year and spend more wisely to afford these pay performance increases that will also benefit the employee benefits throughout the year, such as their retirement program that the employees pay into. I guess I can't say anything further, but we encourage you to support the employees that work for you and keep the city moving forward and really think about the decisions that you have before you tonight. Thank you.
Further public input? Public discussion? Okay, discussion from council on the amendment. Mr. Shaner, since you made the amendment, I'll let you start.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, there are two separate raises being proposed. One is the EIS raises, which I think are very important. We've been trying to implement those for years and we're finally going to get caught up with 28 employees to the tune of a quarter million dollars. And so, to suggest that we aren't doing raises when we're going to be doing that, I think is somewhat misleading. And in terms of, the decision we're faced with with this merit raise issue, the reason I recommend removing that is, we don't have a performance evaluation system in place yet. It is going to be implemented this year. I can tell you from experience, the state, not only has the state not given raises for years, we've given a raise every single year I've been on this council, but they've removed money from their performance evaluation system because it skewed the data. And what we need to do is, we need to implement a performance evaluation system first. We need to establish that bell curve of where all the employees are at, and then we need to make an informed decision about whether we want to start tying money to how people are being evaluated or not. You don't, you don't fund something that isn't even created yet. And so, that's why I think it's more prudent to spend that $771,000 on the new employees that are proposed and much of what is being put in the supplemental budget as recurring expenses with that $771 this year and evaluate how our performance evaluation system is working in the future, as opposed to sacrificing all the things that are in the supplemental budget that are recurring and important for the sake of this 3% placeholder for a performance evaluation system. So, that's, that's the rationale behind paying for the new employees and some of the training and overtime and other things as opposed to the merit pay.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, sir. Would the sponsor consider dividing them in two to have it fail on this time and then bring forth the first part of removal of approximate and then the second part?
I think if you want, Mr. Johnson, you can move to divide the question.
So, Mr. President, through you to my colleague from Ward Three. So, dividing the question, if you, if you do that and you vote down the merit raise cut, then there will be no recurring revenues to put things back in that are being cut in the supplemental budget. So, if you, if you divide them, you won't be able to put some of the critical things that have been placed, that are being paid for with reserves into being paid for with recurring revenues. You could do it, but it just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow for the ultimate plan.
I guess as a follow-up then through the treasurer, so, as he stated earlier, how many percentages of the actual EIS increases are in the standard budget versus the supplemental?
Mr. Downey?
Mr. Rainey, through you to Mr. Johnson. I believe the bulk of the EIS increases are in the standard budget. There might be a couple that stuck through in the supplement and my expectations are, those are probably in the police line items.
In the police line item?
Yes.
Finish, Mr. Johnson?
And so, you still stand though on that, that you prefer not to divide the question to go do it all at once?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to my colleague, that way we have $771,000 to put stuff back in that gets cut in the supplemental.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Case?
Just clarify, and I hope that we can work with the mayor over the next couple of weeks as this process unpacks itself, but I have to agree that the, first and foremost, we don't have that pay-for-performance piece in place. And having worked for an organization that has been kind of a laboratory for how pay-for-performance works and doesn't, if you will, what I've found is, or what I've learned is, that bell curve often swings very, very far to the right because everybody likes their employees, right? And everybody wants their employees to be great, so everybody's great. And I hope that we can work with her over the next couple of weeks to a, find those funds to fund a raise and B, design that performance plan so that it is distributed fairly, if that makes sense. So, just a comment, so, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Roybal?
And I'm not sure if this is maybe for Eric or for Robert, but we have $771,818 proposed to be expended on merit raises. What was your mechanism for, did you have a mechanism in place? Was there discussion on it?
The mechanism, I'm sorry, Dr. Rainey, through you.
Mechanism on it to, to award the merit pay?
Through you, Dr. Rainey. There is currently, the directors are meeting like twice a month to put, to change our current evaluation system so it more reflects what is needed for a merit-based pay system. The process is, is ongoing, working diligently for that.
So, is this something that if, if we don't figure it out with the mayor in the next couple of weeks, as my, our Councilman Rocky Case was mentioning, is this something we could add to a supplemental budget at some point later in the year?
Through you, Dr. Rainey. Yes, once again, if we did get the performance appraisal process put in place, we could absolutely come back through reappropriation and do something.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment?
One more comment.
Mr. Downey?
If the revenues were appropriate to do so.
Thank you.
We all believe that, thank you. Mr. Fountain?
President Rainey, through you. Mr. Roybal, the plan is to actually mirror what the Board of Public Utilities is currently doing, and so, we've met with them prior to this and we're gathering that information, so we're hoping to achieve that at a more rapid rate in order to get that put into place.
Mr. President?
Mr. Roybal?
Do you have a timetable for that? Are we looking within the next week, two weeks?
Mr. President, through you, I don't want to give a specific timeline for that, but I'm pretty confident we can achieve as much as we possibly can mirroring what the Board of Public Utilities has done in a relatively expeditious fashion.
Thank you.
Discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I see the noes. Johnson, Roybal, amendment is adopted. Mr. Shaner?
Mr. President, I move to amend the budget ordinance as follows. By adding the following expenditures into the standard budget request. Add $16,268 in facilities and maintenance for what was identified as an FY 2018 insufficiency. Add in police admin, the proposed supplemental items of $65,156. Add in police patrol proposed supplemental items of 292471. Add into fire admin, $45,126. Fire training, $50,000. Fire suppression, $125,000 for contractual wage adjustment and overtime. City treasurer, professional services, $30,000. City engineer, this one's a little bit confusing, and Mr. Treasurer, to do that sort of bifurcated funding, is $33,000 sufficient in the city engineer's budget with the fifth penny money?
Dr. Rainey, through you. I didn't get a chance to go over that today, but I believe it's going to be closer to $40,000 that we need in the general fund to cover those costs.
All right, so city engineer, transfer engineer position, $40,000. I need to redo my math here. Okay?
$741.
And, and just so council understands what's going on there, that's a, that's an existing position that's being moved from fifth penny into the city engineer's office and then we're increasing the salary by roughly 30-some-odd thousand. So, it's not a new employee, it's just being moved directly under the city engineer and we're going to have to put some general fund in it on top of the fifth penny that's already on it. Planning and development historic preservation grant matches for $6,000. Economic support to the animal shelter, $21,000. $50,000 for fight the blight efforts, which I think will result in quite a bit more than $50,000 total in that line item, as was explained earlier. And then, that, I believe, is a total of approximately $741,021. And as part of this amendment, Mr. President, I would say two things. Certainly, any, any micro-level adjustments that need to be made by the treasurer due to inaccuracies of my numbers, I would certainly include that in this amendment as just a technical change, as well as if these expenditures do not add up to the proposed revenues, that the treasurer will reduce his sales tax estimate accordingly to match revenues to expenditures. And that concludes my amendment.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Luna. Public discussion? Hearing none. Discussion from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Roybal?
Quick question on, to the amend, amendor. Okay. Add in police patrol proposed supplemental items, it's 292471, is that the two additional officers, 156347, and the performance-based pay at 135819?
So, Mr. President, through you, that is, I'm looking at page 56 in our budget book, police patrol detail, and it's got a total of proposed supplemental budget of 292473, and I said 471, so that would be, excuse me, a technical amendment the treasurer can make. So, that would include all of that, that would include the salary, excuse me, salary adjustment for the sergeants, the two additional officers, adjustments for CSOs, continue operation change for the muni court, health insurance, social security, police pension, workers' comp, and police vacation buyout.
Okay, and then the line above it, the 65156?
Mr. President, through you, I'm looking at page 54 of our budget book as a total, 65156 proposed supplemental budget of use of force simulator, officer psych wellbeing, junk vehicles, MTCE contract license, all adding up to that 65.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion on the amendment? Discussion? Mr. Cook?
Yes, President Rooney, through you to the, to the amender. So, I only see here unless he's got plans to draw the other $50,000 for the blight efforts somewhere else, but I'm only seeing $50,000 for the blight efforts here. I'll just ask the sponsor of this amendment what his plans are to address the other $50,000. I'll just ask the sponsor of this amendment what his plans are to address the other 50,000.
Sure, Mr. President, through you. My understanding is that through carryover from this fiscal year to the next fiscal year, plus some CDBG opportunities, and I believe another funding source as well, will result in that line item having approximately 130,000 in it. And I would allow the Treasurer to correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Rennie, through you, to Mr. Shaner and to Mr. Cook. You have the 50,000, if you put that in here now, we have approximately 86,000 in CDBG monies that will be available for blight. So the total of those two would be the 136,000 for blight.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. I guess, just my thought at the beginning, and maybe I misunderstood, but I had anticipated and hoped by shooting down the amendment of the 100,000 earlier, it was that even though there were those other identified streams of funding to bring us 236,000, I had hoped that we would continue to put a total from this budget of 100,000 in. So I'm a little taken aback by that, but that's all I had.
Mr. Shaner.
To my colleague from Ward Two. So if you see our total expenditure here, we're at about 741,000. And if you look above, we freed up 771,818. So there still is a cushion of about 30,000. If this amendment passed, you'd have 30,000 if you wanted to move to amend to add that back in, which would get you to 80, but we just don't have enough recurring revenues to put in a full 100 in addition to the money already in there.
Mr. Cook.
Yes, Mr. President, in response to Councilman Shaner. I certainly was aware of that. I guess maybe what I'm going to plan on doing between now and the committee, the whole, because, you know, we spoke earlier on this issue, you know, regarding, you know, maybe trying to beef up some of our nuisance control and so forth. I intend to at least somewhat try to provide them with a little bit more money in their line item, maybe with this additional funding. I would, I will be working on an amendment to do such at the committee, the whole. But I think we can definitely continue to use that money toward this overall goal of helping this issue as a whole. So I'll anticipate working on that before the committee, the whole.
Mr. Cook, the proposal does double what is in the nuisance abatement budget.
Yes, I do realize that, President Rennie, but I was more more focused on what I had referred to earlier, just as far as giving them more resources. Not necessarily so much for the direct abatement, but for just the overall enforcement piece and the proactivity piece to keep us from having to have these large expenditures for abatement of entire properties.
Understood. For the comments on the amendment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm guessing that as far as staff goes, I know that Chief Fect will be happy, so he doesn't need to come up because the 21,000 is back in there. But going from the top, if Vicki can come up in regards to her part, facilities and maintenance for fiscal year 2018 insufficient, if she's okay with the amendment?
Director Nemeczek.
Vicki Nemeczek, Public Works, through you, Mr. President. I am good with the amendment, except that if I don't have 10,000 in my Public Works admin budget, I will not have, be able to pay for pool vehicles. So those pool vehicles, the six that we have for everybody to use, since we removed 31 vehicles from our fleet, will not be able to be used. So that is my major problem with that.
And then the next, for the police chief.
Brian Kozek with Police Department.
Same question with this amendment for the, excuse me, add in police admin, proposed supplemental items for 65156, and then police patrol proposed for 292471, exactly as he stated in your detail. Are you okay with the amendment?
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, I am happy with it. I guess, lesson learned, there was some misunderstanding with the budget preparation where we, some department heads thought that anything that was, we were going to ask above last year's budget went into a supplemental budget. And so thus, everything I asked in the supplemental request is pretty much needed and should have gone in the original budget anyway. So I am happy to see that that is being moved over and included. And I also am, as you know, the Police Department has had a pay-for-performance evaluation system for about nine years now that we've been using. And so we already have a process in place. But I am supportive of your move to do something consistently with all city employees once a policy has been established on a pay-for-performance plan. So I am in support of the amendment. Thank you.
The next ques, same question for Chief Hoggit.
Dr. Rennie, through you to the council. I'm happy with anything you give me based upon my needs. That was, I have to, you know, concur with what the police chief just told you, that this being my first budget, and as I prepared it, it was my understanding that I got last year's budget where it was, then all the additional needs that were presented were now in the supplemental because they were new. And the guidance aspect of reoccurring, which I absolutely agree, if it is a reoccurring expense, it should be part of that. But the first time to get it started and get going, I'll take what you give me. But I'm still waiting for that other shoe to drop, so.
And, Mr. President, through you to my colleague from Ward Three. I do intend to give some one-time money to get the Fire Department caught up, but this is in a way to establish some of his ongoing needs and appropriate recurring line item.
Mr. Johnson. You want to continue?
Yeah, so the next one for the city treasurer, which you've kind of covered as far as your 30,000. So I'm guessing that's susceptible or acceptable to you?
Dr. Rennie, through you to Mr. Johnson. Yes, that's acceptable to me. And also, I believe that the police chief should have had his items in the standard budget all along. It was probably a mistake on my part in not communicating better with the department heads.
I actually attend the Historic Preservation Board meetings, so I know they'll be happy with what you did there, and then the chief. So then the 50,000, I guess, is, you all know how I feel about that, so I'll let you guys fight over that one. So those are all my questions, but I do appreciate the last part that he added in regards to the Treasurer reducing this according to sales tax estimates. I actually think that's a very good statement, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Cook.
Yes, President Rennie, just through, to yourself and Mr. Downing, as well as the sponsor of this amendment. So just so we are all clear on the proposed changes to this amendment, it was originally 734,021, but with the change in the transfer engineer position from 33 to 40,000, as well as the additional 10,000 for the Public Works administration budget, I am seeing that total now to be changed to 751,021. Is that?
Actually, it'd be 23 dollars if everyone, no one has a problem with that.
75123, is that the correct amount of the amendment?
No.
Or, well, does?
The councilman from Ward Two that made the motion wanted to step the 10,000 dollars.
Yes, does the sponsor of this amendment wish to change the amount of the amendment to reflect these discussed changes?
Mr. President, I would accept that as a friendly amendment to add that 10,000 in to fleet facilities and maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be clear on what we were voting on.
I know it's not, so we have to make an amendment.
Just vote in to do another amendment.
Actually, we can make an amendment to an amendment, I believe. So we can, but we have to have that formally taken. And I would go ahead and, as part of that, make this change from 33 to 40 on the engineer also.
Dr. Rennie, one statement here to Mr. Shaner. If I remember correctly, the pay-for-performance for the general fund was 525,000 of the 771. The 771 came from all funds. And looking at this list, for the amendment of the expenditures going back in, these are all general fund expenditures. So I believe the way the amendment rights is written right now, it does not work. Does that make sense?
All right, well, we may, they have some homework then between. All right, so if you want to change it, we have an amendment on the floor. You can amend it to add 10,000 for administration to facilities and maintenance admin for vehicles and change the, if we're going to do it correctly, change the city engineer's transfer from 33 to 40.
Okay. Mr. President, question through you to the Treasurer on that. So the 525 is general fund, and then the one, was it 140-something? From those other?
146.
146. Those are located in what other funds?
It'd be the fifth penny fund, a small amount in sixth penny fund, the bulk of it would be the sanitation fund, the fleet. So it goes across the rest of the organization. But the general fund was the bulk of it, I think the number was like 525,000 for the merit-based increases.
Mr. President, through you. So I would imagine the sixth penny funds are pretty restricted, but are those funds capable of being moved to pay for general fund expenditures?
Generally, no.
No.
No. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Rennie, through you. Generally, the answer to that is no. There is a small amount that is O and M for Greenways and Botanic Gardens.
Botanic Gardens.
Yeah, so those line items are very, very minimal, and those do cover some of the general fund operations for those items.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, Mr. President, are you asking for that, me to officially move that amendment to the amendment?
Yes, if you want to add the 10,000 and change 33 to 40.
I will move that amendment to the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Royball. Public discussion on this amendment. Public discussion. Hearing none, council discussion. Any comments? Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, so you don't believe this will work the way it's currently written?
The way it's currently written, we added 751,000 to the general fund, and we only removed 525,000 expenditures from the general fund.
I'll come back to that later.
Do you want to follow up on?
Sure.
So what did, if we have, if we have an amendment, amendment one, which took out 771,818, and we only had 550 that actually came out of general fund, in your view, where's the other 146 coming from? And you said that would be fifth penny, sixth penny, fleet, and sanitation?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have to go back and fix that at some point.
We have to go back and fix the general fund, to only reduce the general fund, or add additional expenditures to the general fund for 525,000.
Okay. All right. To the amendment at hand, which is adding 10,000 and changing 33,000 to 40, and we're all going to accept 292473 instead of 292471. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. The amendment is amended, so back to the amendment at hand.
Mr. President.
Mr. Royball.
Would you, the amendee, amendor, be, would you want to postpone it for a couple, or postpone it for two weeks? Till we got it to where we needed it?
Pardon me?
Can we postpone it?
Yeah, that's true, we're on second reading, Mr. Royball, we have two weeks to fix it.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, through you to my colleague from Ward One, that's a good question. I think if we pass this, what we can do is pass another one that gives some discretion to the mayor to work on it for the next meeting to get those two aligned, since we're, we have a little bit of a gap. But we do have some reserves to play with.
Discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I guess, Mr. Johnson. For scheduling, since both Dickey and I aren't here next week, are you guys all comfortable moving forward without him here to give an explanation?
They may be happy he won't be here. It's just.
I'll carry the ball.
Dr. Rennie, through you. I think I have an idea of what Dr. Shaner, or Mr. Shaner wants, so I believe we can come up with something.
If it worked out before Wednesday?
Yes.
Good. All right, any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson's a no. All right. Mr. Shaner, you have another amendment?
Yeah, Mr. President, just for clarification, so I understand, to the Treasurer. So right now, we are short 226 in general fund?
146, I believe.
One moment, please, I'm adding those up.
Okay.
147.
Carry the one.
163.
He told me to be no math in this job.
The number I came up with is 246,525.
Forty-six.
Okay. Okay. All right, I will make one final amendment here, Mr. President. I move to create a one-time revenue line with an amount of 1 million in revenue from reserves. And then to create a one-time expenditure line with 1 million spent as follows. And again, I would defer to the Treasurer on the technical drafting of how these look. 629,000 to fire suppression for self-contained breathing apparatus and other necessary equipment as deemed necessary by the fire chief. The remainder, approximately 371,000, to be spent at the mayor's discretion only on items identified in the proposed 2019 supplemental budget, and of those items, only ones that are not payroll-related, that the city's full-time employee count for FY 2019 be limited to 570 or less to account for the two new officers going from 568 to 570. And the last part of this will be for the mayor to find the 246,525 in recurring revenues and recurring expenditure decreases to balance that 246,525 issue we have in the general fund, as well as to account for the other funds that we removed the merit raises from to find another expenditure in those line items other than the merit raise.
Does, I have a question for the councilman from Ward Two. Do you want to leave? The city treasurer just said he thought he had a solution. Do you want to hear his solution before you put that last part in? I mean, and I realize you don't have it tonight, but I mean, we have till next week.
Yeah, I just wait till next week. I don't have anything ready specifically tonight.
I understand that, I just didn't know if.
Do you think that language probably directs them to do that, right?
Perhaps.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. All right, any public input on this amendment? I was hoping to get through these and then take a break, so.
I have a second.
Any public input? Any public input? Hearing, hearing none. Oh, yeah, I do need a second, sorry. See, I need a break too, I'm getting a little spacey up here. All right, so seconded by Mr. Case. All right. Discussion among council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Royball.
On line item, where it says 629,000 to fire suppression for self-contained breathing apparatus and other necessary equipment as deemed necessary by the chief, would that allow him to do the lease buyout, so he can do both the scuba gear and the radios and whatever he deemed necessary out of that?
Mr. President, through you, that's my intent, by allowing him to utilize that money as he deems appropriate, but I wanted to place emphasis on those breathing apparatus as well.
Do we need to add at the end of that, deemed necessary by the fire chief, at his discretion?
Sure, I'd accept that.
Okay.
So. All right, just to expedite this, suggestion is to, after the sentence, 629,000, is deemed necessary by the fire chief?
At his discretion.
I think that's redundant, but, Mr. Case, you made the second, are you all right with that?
I agree with you, Dr. Rennie, but I'm fine with it.
All right. Further comment on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment as proposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson's a no. Amendment is adopted, we will take a 10-minute recess.
I can either press, I can either press, tell Kristi I can either necessarily quit complaining too.
All right, we'll start as soon as Mr. Downey gets back.
So, that's where I'm at.
All right. We'll reconvene this. We're still on item 11. We have three amendments that we have approved or adopted. I don't remember which it is, anyway. Any further discussion on the budget? Further discussion? Okay. Then all those in favor of the budget as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. Cool, let's read something else.
Ordinance second reading pursuant to section 2.2.1 zoning map amendment, section 2.2.2 planned development plan, section 5.1.2 zoning districts established, section 5.1.3 official zoning map, and section 5.6.2 PUD planned unit development district of the unified development code, changing the zoning classification from Laramie County Sweetgrass Planned Unit Development, PUD, to City of Cheyenne Sweetgrass, PUD, for 2,349.54 acres of land known as the Sweetgrass Land Area, City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located south of College Drive and east of Avenue C.
Mr. Royball.
Uh, sorry, it says I'm head of mayor here. Mr. President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading with a revised map, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Luna. Any discussion from the public? Public input? All right. Discussion from the council? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance on second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved on second reading.
Ordinance first reading defining the terms and conditions of employment for non-uniformed employees of the City of Cheyenne for fiscal year 2018 to 2019.
This item is referred to the Finance Committee.
Ordinance first reading defining the terms and conditions of employment for sworn officers of the Cheyenne Police Department for fiscal year 2018 to 2019.
This item is also referred to the Finance Committee.
Ordinance first reading repealing in its entirety Chapter 12.16 Trees and Shrubs and creating a new Chapter 12.16 Trees of Title 12, Street Sidewalks and Public Places of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
This item is also referred to Finance Committee.
Next item is number 18, a resolution expressing the City of Cheyenne's desire and commitment to facilitating commercial passenger air service at the Cheyenne Regional Airport both now and in the future.
Mr. White?
Mr. Chair, or, excuse me, President Rennie, I have a conflict.
Okay. Mr. Johnson has recused himself. Mr. White?
Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Mr. President, I move.
Pardon me. The second was Royball, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. White.
I move to amend the now and therefore clause by adding the words "safe" and "reliable" in the third line following the word "support."
Second.
The amendment is seconded by Mr. Royball. Yes. Public discussion on the amendment?
Good evening, Mr. President. Wendy Volk, I am here speaking on behalf of the newly formed Craft Organization standing for the Cheyenne Regional Air Focus Team. I will keep this short and brief, I know it's a long, exhausting night. Our organization was formed specifically for recruiting non-stop air service here in Cheyenne. Our board of directors is comprised of various governmental agency representatives and key business stakeholders with a diverse array of experience and expertise. Minimum revenue guarantee is an economic development tool for recruiting air service. The effort to bring new air passenger service is an example of making our state capital more business-friendly. I will share one business example. Last month, there was a public health training conference that was to have been held in Cheyenne for 11 state region. There was representatives of about 50 people for a five-day conference. Because of our lack of passenger air service, the conference had to be moved to Denver. Visit Cheyenne ran an economic model of what a 50-person, five-day business conference would have impacted our community. It was, came to $50,000. So, next time we think about what air service represents, think about a five-day business conference with 50 people, and it was a $50,000 impact or a loss to our community. Since 1927, Cheyenne had realized substantial economic benefits for air service. We appreciate you supporting this endeavor. I have personally raised over $85,000 in private pledges from both individuals and businesses. The pledges are starting at $50 on up. Any one of you that would like to make a pledge, I will accept it. And, as a Wyoming citizen and community stakeholder, I believe in air service, I believe in the impact what it is to our businesses and to our tourism, and it is a key part of our economy, and thank you for supporting this endeavor.
Thank you. Any further public input? Okay, council discussion on the amendment. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is amended. Discussion on the motion then as amended.
Public.
No, the, yeah, well, we've actually gone.
Yeah, I know.
All right. Discussion on council on the amendment, or on the motion as amended, pardon me.
Mr. President.
Mr. Case.
I've heard a lot of, I don't know, misinformation flying around in the community regarding what we're doing here and what we're not doing here, so I think it's important just to get a couple of things out, and hopefully those that are misinformed, if you will, listen to this and become informed as to what exactly we're doing here tonight and what we're not doing here tonight. But there's a little bit of, little bit of history that needs to be told here, and the consequences of not doing something in partnership with the state and the county and the Joint Powers Board and Craft and all of the stakeholders that have something in the game, the consequences of that are going to be a voter-approved eighteen million dollar airport to nowhere or warehouse. And the voters approve that, and I think we have an obligation to do our due diligence here to make certain the right thing is done here. So, just kind of a reminder, that was approved. This is, this is an opportunity for economic development for our community. It's an opportunity to bring conventions here, as Ms. Volk stated, there's, there, it's not about, to me, what are we spending here? It's about the long-term gain of what we can get by doing this in partnership with all the stakeholders. One thing I want to point out here is what we're not doing tonight, we're, we're putting our support for six hundred thousand dollars in order that the people at the table with the airlines have the ammunition to go to the table and say the city is committed. We're not writing a check for six hundred thousand dollars tonight. We don't know what that amount might be, and we won't know until those negotiations have been completed. So, just kind of with that said, I think the biggest takeaway here is to look at it just from, through, through that different lens. This is about what can Cheyenne gain and not about what is Cheyenne going to spend, and I think that the gain is going to offset that, that spend by, by quite a bit. And, so I urge my, and, and one more point I want to make is, we'll probably get some pushback as we just had a very long discussion about the budget. Is there a line item for this? No, we're not going to have a line item for this in the budget as of now. That will come in the, in the future, probably as a supplemental deal once negotiations are complete and we know exactly what we're doing and working with. And if I misspoke and stated anything incorrectly, I see some of the stakeholders in the audience if they would wish to correct me at all, but if not, I would just urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner.
Just briefly want to thank my colleague, Councilman Case, for his leadership on this, as well as all the partners that we have here. I see some airport staff, airport board, Craft members, and the state. I've seldom seen such widespread community collaboration focused on an issue like I have with air service and the state also being a collaborative and really a leader in this, so it's been really comforting to see everybody come together and rally around a cause of this nature, so thank you for that.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's adopted.
Next item is number twenty-five E on page five, professional services agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Asbestos and Technical Services Incorporated for services for the demolition and disposal of the residential structure located at eight fifteen Capitol Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Any public comment? Or do we need a staff report at all? We don't think we do. Public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Mr. White.
Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an, an amount not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars, and I so move.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Case, a second. Uh, where did I ask for public? Any discussion among council? Mr. Luna.
Mr. President, what's the, I don't know who can answer this, but what's the chances of us recouping any of this forty-three thousand dollars?
Mr. Fountain.
Dr. Rennie through you to Councilman Luna. It's not so much about recouping all the dollars that we invest into the demo of the property, it's the long-term redevelopment process that will actually recoup some of those dollars. The process to actually recoup anything is that we will hope that the company took out a tax certificate against the property will buy us out because they're actually the first in position. If not, then what will actually happen is the property would go for bid, and we would recoup only the money that went out as the bid proposal coming back into us. So, whatever the person would bid for the property, the highest bidder would, would get that. Effectively, that's the more or less process of how it would work. But we have to look at this in terms of, when we work on the blight, what we're doing is we're re, we're investing in our community, we're cleaning up a situation, and we're hoping that the impact in that area with any of the homes that we are working on will see new revenues coming in from the tax assessment on the new property developed there, as well as the area that's impacted by the blighted properties currently in their way.
Mr. Downey, did you want to add anything? I saw you reaching for your microphone a moment ago.
Uh, Mr. Rennie through you, the chances of recouping these costs, I believe are minimal because we are so far down on the list of priorities on who gets paid after the property is sold, those kinds of things. So, this is not to recoup those costs, this is to reinvest in the community and hopefully take our community a better place.
Mr. Luna, anything further?
Yeah, I got, I understand about making our community a better place, but this seems like it's good, I mean, how many forty-three thousand dollars are we going to spend that possibly might not make our community a better place? I mean, people leave their property a mess and, well, the city will go in and clean it up.
Dr. Rennie through you, well, we're putting money in the budget to currently do that, so.
This is, through you, Mr. President, this is where the code enforcement officer could probably use a bunch of help, and we probably wouldn't be in the position we were in to go in and clean up all these properties. That's all.
Been sitting next to Cook, haven't you?
Excellent, excellent. We're all bald, we're all starting to sink together. What do you mean we?
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Labor.
Well, this speaks to our fundamental responsibilities of public health and safety. And I'm sure no one up here would be wondering if this was the right thing to do if the house next to them had raccoons in it and fires in it and needles were left outside and transients came and did whatever they wanted to, and the neighborhood children are right there with this right absolutely as part of their life. Certainly, we're not going to get our money back, but this has been a long and arduous process, and I think it's time we proceeded with it and proceeded with other properties as well. And I would point out that they're probably, in fact, I've seen a couple of cases that hopefully were remediated and urged on by the fact that we have a program. I think this makes it more, people aware that these things, we're taking them seriously and that we can deal with that. But this is absolutely the fundamental reason we're here as a society. It is the protection of the people that live here and their property. And I can tell you that I look forward to continuing this effort because when you go over to the neighborhood and you see the people who've moved there, invested in it, cared about their property, and they're telling you, "We can't take it anymore. We can't let our kids out. We don't know who's over there. We don't know what they're doing." That just is absolutely the reason that we are sitting here today is because we are a society that recognizes that the public health and safety is the essential function of the City of Cheyenne. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Did we find out since last week how many liens are actually on this property? Does anyone have an answer to that?
Mr. Fountain.
Dr. Rennie through you to Councilman Johnson. The only lien that we are aware of is the tax lien, and that's a tax certificate that's been taken against the property. There is no loans currently against eight fifteen Capitol that we're aware of.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the, of the contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. Contract is approved.
Professional services agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Noel Griffith Junior and Associates Architects for Analytical and Design Engineering for the construction of a new municipal court at three oh eight West Seventeenth Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming, one percent specific purpose sales tax.
Any public comment?
Vicki Nemetschek, Vicki Nemetschek Public Works. I feel the need since this, and I know it's late, but I feel the need to explain how important it is at this point in the municipal court project to get a professional consultant under contract. This is the professional services agreement between the City and Noel Griffith Junior and Associates Architects for Analytical and Design Engineering for the construction of a new municipal court at three oh eight West Seventeenth Street. I'd like to go through the steps leading up to placing this item on the agenda. It starts with the most important. On May second, twenty seventeen, the voters of Laramie County approved a ballot question allocating nine million dollars to the City of Cheyenne for construction of a new municipal court. On June fifth of twenty seventeen, the Board of Laramie County Commissioners sent the city a letter requiring the municipal court to vacate the county building by February first, twenty eighteen. August eighth, twenty seventeen, the Public Works Department issued RFP three dash eighteen, new municipal court addition and/or renovation. The RFP committee reviewed and scored three proposals from SEH, Plan One, and Noel Griffith Junior and Associates. They then interviewed all three proposers, SEH, Plan One, and Noel Griffith Junior and Associates Architects. The committee, consisting of Chief of Staff Eric Fountain, from the Engineering Department, Mark Escobedo, Judge Mark Moran from the Municipal Court, Mike Wright, and Steve Gier, both from Facilities Maintenance, conducted interviews September ninth through the twenty-first of twenty seventeen. The committee selected Noel Griffith and Junior, Noel Griffith Junior and Associates Architects as the successful consultant on September twenty-second, twenty seventeen. The process of selecting a consultant involves scoring each proposal, then interviewing proposals and scoring, and scoring the interview. The successful consultant is the one with the highest score based on the individual score sheets. We should have at that point moved forward with a contract. The contract was delayed due to the lack of funding. Collection of the sixpenny tax did not begin until October twenty seventeen. A contract cannot be placed on council agenda without a funding source. RFP one dash eighteen request for proposals for municipal finance council services was issued October twentieth, twenty seventeen, to address financing options. In December of twenty seventeen, the temporary relocation of the municipal court was completed. The relocation of the court was removed from the scope of work as that work was completed under a separate contract due to time constraints. March twelfth, twenty eighteen, the reconsideration of RFP fourteen dash eighteen for the new site of the municipal court passed to include the following language. The closing on the property shall not occur until and unless an analysis of the site, along with estimates to demolish the building, remediate the site, and construct a one-story building is completed, and such analysis concludes this can be completed within the nine million dollar allowed by the ballot proposition. On May third of twenty eighteen, a joint memorandum from myself and the city attorney, Sylvia Hackel, on the status of purchases and analysis of the municipal court was sent to the mayor and the city council. We provided the estimate to demolish, which that was completed with, the exceptions noted that estimate came in at three hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Although with all the exceptions, I will admit that I didn't really fully understand how to ma, how to request that estimate. Remediation of the site, contract with Tri-Hydro to complete phase one environmental site assessment and phase two if required, plus asbestos inspection and sampling was completed. Tri-Hydro, the Tri-Hydro team, which consisted of a geologist and an environmental scientist, informed me they could not complete the asbestos sampling, and I will say here that I felt a little inadequate reviewing a one-thousand-page document that was submitted to me by a geologist and an environmental scientist. The last, a construction estimate, we put that together, three point six five, six seven five million for a ten thousand five hundred square foot court, a two-point-six million dollar soft cost, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar purchase price, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the site preparation, and the estimate of three hundred ninety thousand five hundred dollars for the demolition totaled, now totals seven million two-hundred-and-ninety thousand five hundred dollars. So, the wild card remains asbestos abatement. On May fourteenth, twenty eighteen, the purchase and sale agreement for the carry site was approved by the governing body at city council. Today, I receive the final phase one environmental site assessment along with an asbestos inspection letter. I forwarded those items to you earlier today with the following note. Mayor and council members, I receive the phase one environmental site assessment ESA in final form this afternoon. It can be accessed by using the FTP site below. Be aware that it's over a thousand pages and takes about an hour to download. I have requested paper copies of the primary report and flash drives of the attachments and figures. They will be mailed tomorrow. I'll provide a copy to Ms. Jones when received. Tri-Hydro is not recommending a phase two ESA. That's good news. As I mentioned in the May third, twenty eighteen update, Tri-Hydro was unable to complete the asbestos building inspection due to significant, significant building deterioration, physical and biological hazards observed during their property inspection. They also provided an asbestos building inspection letter, which I attached, which outlines their recommendation on how to proceed. In short, they recommend hiring a structural engineer to perform a structural assessment of the building. They suggested we contact Joe Hall, the structural engineer from K L and A that originally visited, visited the site in December of twenty seventeen at the request of Mr. Noel Griffith. If the structure is deemed unsound, alternate asbestos-containing material, ACM, management methods could potentially be employed and preclude the need, the need for extensive and hazardous sampling prior to demolition. This would all need to be done through the State of Wyoming Asbestos Program. I would recommend we take Tri-Hydro's advice. However, the steps they propose are beyond my abilities to employ. To move forward with this project, the city needs to hire a professional consultant to produce a scope of work for a structural engineer that would meet the Wyoming asbestos program requirements. Only then can we determine the cost of abatement at the site. On this specific contract, I would say in summary, we were not able to bring a contract to the city council earlier because we did not have funding available to support the cost of the contract. That is no longer the case. Adequate funds have been collected to approve this contract and move forward with the project. Failure of this item will result in a stalled project as I do not have the qualifications necessary to create the scope of work to hire a structural engineer. Without a structural engineer, we will Without a structural engineer, we will be unable to determine asbestos abatement costs. If we can't get a good estimate for abatement costs, we will never meet the condition of the purchase and sale agreement for the Cary site. I recommend approval of the contract with Noel Griffith Jr. and Associates Architects, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Mr. Griffith is also here if you have questions for him.
Are there any questions for Director Nemecek?
Mr. President, just a couple here. Voted for this in committee, and some of the, we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit on this because we, the council has asked, you know, for that analysis, that assessment of can this be done with the dollar amount that we have? And it would be something else to approve a $657,500 contract without answers to those questions. Why go to work on a project that we're not 100% certain? So would it be possible for folks using that top dollar, 1.2 million that we've tossed around, those high-end estimates of abatement and acquisition of the property and all of those, does it fit within that framework? And can we see that prior to approving a $657,000 contract? That's my hesitation because that would be, you know, approximately one-ninth or, you know, certainly one-tenth of the amount of this whole project that we have to spend on design and administration and so forth that to go under contract on an unknown seems to kind of just not make sense to me right now. So if we could, is there a way to move that ball forward to get the council the answers so that we can then move forward with a contract?
Vicky Nemecek, through you. President Rennie, to Mr. Case. This analysis, in my opinion, should be completed by a professional consultant. All of it should have been. I feel completely inadequate doing any of this work. Hiring a consultant now simply puts us back on track for the project. We should have hired them from the very beginning. They should have been on board from the very beginning, but we couldn't because of the funding.
Well, Mr. President, through you. I've found many times in my year and a half here that certain things should have been done quite a bit differently than they were. But here we are today. We can't look backwards. So you're not qualified to give us this analysis, but I'm certainly not going to encourage my colleagues to go under contract for $657,000 when we still have an unknown on a $9 million project. And so I guess perhaps we can get a little more creative to get these answers so that we can move forward, whether that be with the Cary building or another location, if that's necessary. Mr. President?
Mr. Case, are you finished?
I am finished, thanks.
Mr. Shaner?
Perhaps some follow-up from Councilman Case's questioning to Director Nemecek. Do we have any money left on our contract with Tri-Hydro?
Vicky Nemecek, through you. President Rennie, to Mr. Shaner. Yes, we do, but they will not move forward with any abatement.
Mr. President, through you. It says in here that Tri-Hydro is recommending that we get a structural engineer. And they provided us an asbestos building inspection letter, which outlines their recommendation on how to proceed. So why couldn't we ask Tri-Hydro to put basically what their scope of work needs are and hire a structural engineer to do that analysis with you and Tri-Hydro working with that structural engineer?
Vicky Nemecek Public Works, through you. President Rennie, I could ask them, but that is not something that they do. They are not structural engineers. They are environmental engineers.
Mr. President, through you.
Mr. Shaner?
It just, it appears to me if they were willing to outline what they need, that between you and them, you could work with the experienced structural engineer to come up with a scope of work that would get us the analysis that we need in terms of an estimate on the asbestos remediation. I mean, I think we have to have some trust in the structural engineer, though, that person would be able to say, "Yes, this is what I need to do to tell you what you want."
Director, do you have a response?
Vicky Nemecek, through you. Dr. Rennie. So you want me to ask a structural engineer to tell me what I should ask him to do? That sounds...
That's close.
Insane to me.
Yeah. Mr. President, let's try to refrain from editorial and inflammatory comments, but so what I'm saying is, Tri-Hydro has told you what they need, not just you. So you working with Tri-Hydro based off of their asbestos building inspection and what they need the structural engineer to do to identify next steps, I believe, I have confidence that you, Tri-Hydro, and a structural engineer can come up with the scope of work for the structural engineer to identify what Tri-Hydro is asking. That's what I'm saying. I think that's possible.
Mr. President?
Mr. Labor.
I have a question for the city engineer. So knowing that there are several licensed structural engineers here in town that have done work for us in the past, as well as regional opportunities, do you feel that you have the expertise to look at a structural engineer's qualifications and assist in our analysis here?
I think...
Go ahead.
President Rennie, through you. I feel that this is more of an asbestos analysis. We're asking the structural engineer, if the demolition of this building is possible, then Tri-Hydro would, we could eliminate some of the state requirements for the asbestos removal, is my understanding. But that combination of individuals, I'm not sure that that's just a structural engineer. I think they're going to have to work with Tri-Hydro or whatever, like was suggested. Am I wrong? Can I ask Director Nemecek?
Go ahead.
Am I correct, Vicky?
Vicky Nemecek Public Works, through you. President Rennie. My problem with that is that they are making recommendations and either-or in the letter. They are saying that perhaps we don't need to do all the sampling if we can get a structural engineer to say some or part of the building isn't structurally sound. And then we move on to, but if some or part of it is or isn't, then we need to work with the state, the State of Wyoming Asbestos Program. And then we need to make sure that whatever the structural engineer does meets the requirements of the WAP program.
May I interject here, then? It seems to me what my colleagues on the council are asking is, if that's what we need to do, is meet with a structural engineer first, determine the condition of the building, and then go on to somebody to tell us what the cost is going to be on abatement, then why are we not having those contracts in front of us instead of the current contract for the design? And I think that's what we would like to know.
That puts, that clarifies my question, certainly, Mr. President.
Vicky Nemecek Public Works. A project of this magnitude is normally done by a consultant. They know more about a project than I know about a project.
Or us.
I am trying, I have tried to fulfill every opportunity, every task that you've given me to the best of my ability. However, this is beyond my qualifications.
Right.
Hiring a structural engineer, for me to hire a structural engineer seems, well, I don't know.
May I ask, Director Nemecek, if the city needs a structural engineer to get the answer to the next step on this, how else do we do that? I mean, we've hired structural engineers in the past. I know we've used Mr. Clary at times in the past before, I think he's pretty much retired, but, I mean, is there a better department to do that? What's, I mean, to me, we're at an impasse. If you're saying we need a structural engineer, but I'm not qualified to hire a structural engineer, it's like, okay, where do we go?
Mr. President?
Mr. Case?
I see Mr. Griffith has stood up, and perhaps he could answer this question. The council put some conditions on the acquisition of this property, and I believe you're familiar with those conditions. What would it cost to get the answers to those conditions? $657,500?
Say that number again.
$657,500?
Mr. President, counsel, first of all, you are exactly correct. We have between $396,000 or $400,000 and 1.2 million, a great deal of money, a great deal of money. There's $800,000 there, I believe the number is. The removal of the asbestos is not $800,000.
Let me...
No, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Please.
No, I apologize. I didn't interrupt you. I wanted to clarify my question.
Well, I was going to keep going, if I may.
Okay. Continue, please.
I think most of you know that I'm wordy. So with that in mind, we have a structural engineer on our staff or on our project that would be doing what you are talking about. Now, it is a combination of that gentleman telling, if you will, an asbestos removal person what can be done to the structure, and then they will be able to give us an answer of how many dollars. That number is not going to be, I believe you said, $675,000? We have that person already on our staff or on our project and willing to go forward. What we need is a contract so that we can ask that person to get involved and to do it. And that's exactly what we would do. There is no reason and there is no way that we cannot meet the $9 million for this project at 308 Cary to build a one-story courts building.
So, Mr. President?
Mr. Case?
What, we're, I apologize, but I guess we'd just like to see some of that analysis and what, you know, with those conditions in mind, what, how much would that structural engineer's work be to get the answers that the council has asked for? Is that number $657,000? And, or $657,000? Yeah?
Is that number $657,000?
Is that how much we need to pay the structural engineer to get the analysis done? Or how much, what's that number?
Again, at this particular stage, since he and I have not conferred and gone through the building, but it would be much, much less than that number, and it would be added to the number we're talking about. Some of that work we're going to be doing. We're going to be looking at the building on the, in the aspect of, it's got to come down. What do we do to get it down? So I think at this particular stage, if I gave you a guesstimate of somewhere in the $100,000 range, I'm not going to be wrong. He's looked at the building. He knows that it is not feasible to refurbish the building, to try to save the building. So at this stage, it is totally his time to come down and evaluate what the building is. But the other issue, Mr. Case, is that we will then be working with an asbestos removal company to say what and how they're going to do this is going to be X number of dollars. What I'm trying to say is, there is no way that combination of events is going to cost more than the $800,000 that is in the original estimate, and that was still 8.1 million. We're still $900,000 lower than the $9 million. So with the stipulation that you've put, we can build that building with the environmental problems that are existing for less than $9 million.
Mr. Case, are you finished?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Shaner?
Mr. President, through you. To Mr. Griffith, follow-up from Mr. Case's questions. Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for stepping forward and answering questions. Would it be possible for you, perhaps by finance committee next week, or even to the next full council meeting, to come up with an estimate amount of what it would cost for you to get your structural engineer to produce what Tri-Hydro has asked for, and then, if needed, get an estimate from, the cost for an estimate from the asbestos remediation folks as well, so that we can amend this proposal down to that 120 or whatever it is, so that we can get our analysis done before we engage you for this full $600,000 of work? Is that a possibility in the next two weeks?
And I believe that is very possible. Very possible.
Okay. And, Mr. President?
Mr. Shaner, will you yield to Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, when, with the contract for the purchase agreement for the Cary building, we had five days that we were supposed to be waiting on environmental studies that I asked about in committee, and that's long since passed. So what did we actually collect from the past owner?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Madam Attorney.
Through you, to Mr. Johnson. It is true that there are time periods in the purchase and sale agreement. Please be advised that the purchase and sale agreement was not fully executed until today, actually, I believe, maybe yesterday, with the receipt from the seller of his executed copy. So none of the time periods started until today. Okay? So the clock just started. And Mr. West and I have been in communication, and I'm going to put together kind of a little chart that says, "We do this by this date, you do that by that date." But my understanding from Mr. West is that there have been no environmental studies completed by the seller, so I don't anticipate receiving anything.
Okay. Mr. Shaner?
Mr. President, I am going to move, to postpone this to the next council meeting with the request that city staff work with Mr. Griffith on coming forward with an amendment by substitute that just accomplishes getting the structural engineer to make the requested and necessary analysis that Tri-Hydro has asked for, and if needed, get an estimate as well from his, from Mr. Griffith's asbestos remediation expert, so that we can get that piece of this project moving. And then, based on what we find out from that, then we can come back to this larger contract going forward.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone until June 11th? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Case. Comment on the motion to postpone? Public comment? Discussion from council?
When we talk about major construction projects, I think we have to keep in mind the difficulties that are involved in any construction project, much less demolition of this building, complying with those requirements that are environmentally involved. And I think when we're assured verbally that this can be done without the factual written analysis, that would be extremely imprudent on our part. analysis, that would be extremely imprudent on our part. That just is not the way construction works. That is not the way problems of demolition of buildings that the property owner ignored and abused for many years, and now we have to pay to analyze it and perhaps clean it up. But I speak very strongly in favor of this postponement so that we can get the determination that our consultant here has asked for. Tri-Hydro, in the letter we got this afternoon, very clearly calls for the steps that we want to take here. So I think if we're going to follow the professional advice, that's a good way to do it. Thank you.
All right. As a point of order, called point of order on myself, we were...
It's about time.
We were, yeah. We were in public discussion. We really never had a main motion, so we don't have anything to postpone yet. At least, as far as we can remember.
I'll move to approve.
Well, is there any further public discussion?
I've got it. Still haven't read the motion.
All right. Hearing none. May I have Mr. White?
Mr. President, the motion to approve and an amount not to exceed $657,500 failed. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the Finance Committee on this item.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. President, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Roy Ball, seconded by Case. Mr. Shaner.
Same motion to postpone.
Second.
Seconded by Roy Ball. All right. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, the motion is to postpone for two weeks until June 11th, in the hopes that we will get some further information from Mr. Griffith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is, the contract is postponed for two weeks.
Next item is number 28B on page seven, appointments of John Brewster and Susan Brown to the Historic Preservation Board.
May I have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Luna, take your pick.
You have cook.
Discussion on the appointments? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointments are approved.
Announcement of public hearing to be held Monday, June 11th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Mancuzzo's Limited Liability Company, doing business as Esters, 2114 Warren Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of public hearing to be held Monday, June 11th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers, 2101 O'Neill Avenue, for proposed budgets for the city of Cheyenne and Board of Public Utilities for fiscal year 2019. Other business?
So any other business come before the council and the public? Any other business from the council?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Just to give an update on where we're at with our splash pad fundraising, we have the $15,000 from the 150th Anniversary Committee. Visit Cheyenne made a $50,000 commitment. A couple of weeks ago, the DDA made a $30,000 commitment. That took it up to $95,000. And then private individuals have come forward and have donated about another $8,000 to this, give or take. So we're roughly between $103,000 and $104,000 right now. And then, not to take his glory, I will turn this over to Mr. Case to do his advertisement for what he has planned on June 9th.
I'll be, I'll be brief. Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Where anybody wants to come out and throw some water balloons or a squirt gun fight on the street at Daniel Marks Brewing Company, we're going to have a kids' fight, and then we're going to have an adults' fight, and hopefully raise some significant money toward the splash pad.
Am I still being dunked?
We do, we did get confirmation that the Dunk Tank will be there. So we're looking for, plunge the politicians. Anybody wants to volunteer?
I'll volunteer. Is it okay if I wear my Speedo?
No.
No. Point of order on Mr. Roy Ball's Speedo.
I think I've lost them. All right, council, any other business? We are adjourned.